Good evening, Yorktown, and welcome to the July 13th Town Board Meeting. It is a work session. If everyone could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you can all join me in a moment of silence, and as we say a special prayer for all of our neighbors who are dealing with very specific or untold issues, whether that's mental health or cancer. We also say a special prayer for all of our first responders, our police, firefighters, our volunteer ambulance corps members. And of course, we remember in our prayers the bravest men and women in the world, the men and women serving the United States armed forces. Thank you.
Amen.
A few introductions quickly.
Hi, good evening, I'm Alice Roker.
Matt Slater, Town Supervisor.
Councilman Tom Diana.
Councilman Ed Lachterman.
We have an interesting meeting tonight. It is a combined work session and regular Town Board Meeting because we do have two public hearings that we're going to be reconvening. We're going to start with our first presentation, which is going to be given to us by our Police Chief, Robert Noble, and Sergeant Ken Skroy. This is part of our follow-up on EO 203, the Executive Order 203, and the town's task force that was put together, the Coalition on Community Safety and Engagement. In the final report, one of the things that was asked of the Police Department was to beta-test some body cameras and to provide a report to the town. They did provide that report to the Town Board, as was requested, and they are now here to provide a public presentation on those findings. And I'm going to invite Chief Noble and Sergeant Skroy to the podium, please. And by the way, I do want to, while you're coming up, I do want to thank Mora and the Town Clerk's Office for their assistance in the presentation tonight. We're still getting our sea legs underneath us. This is only our second meeting back. We got, I think, used to Zoom for a while there, but we're getting back into the swing of things here. So, Mora, thank you so much for your assistance tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mora, and Supervisor Slater, members of the Town Board. Thanks for having us again. Yes, we did have the report in at the end of April as mandated, but, you know, I will say this. It is nice to be back in this venue, and good evening to everybody here. I'm sorry you got a look at my back. My front ain't much better? All right. But, yeah, we looked into, you know, body cameras. That was a very specific point of the conversation. And before I turn it over to Sergeant Ken Skroy, he was tasked with, you know, the beta-testing of the body camera products. So, we did that over a period of several months. Officers wore the cameras, we viewed the results, we sought input from the police officers who did wear the body cameras out into the field, and Sergeant Skroy and other members of our agency also researched the vendors, even after wearing the products and after receiving the quotes for the body cameras. And we made, I think, a very well-informed decision on a vendor to use. But before Sergeant Skroy begins, let me go over a few of the reasons, and I jotted down a few why body cameras have not been fully deployed by the agencies. This is since 2016, and the top two are insufficient funding and lack of staff to handle the footage. Those are the top two. Other things that are listed here, we can probably get through with those two first hurdles being addressed, and that are legal policy issues. We're prepared to work with the PBA and legal team, Attorney Rodriguez, to craft a, you know, an excellent policy that, you know, I have the International Association of Police Policy. And then we're going to check with neighboring jurisdictions, like the county police and other agencies that have it, to see what works for our department and the membership. And insufficient time to complete deployment, well, that's something I think, like I said, with the adequate staffing, we could make happen. And lack of support, well, I think that's, you know, that's up to you and the community once you hear our presentation tonight, to see if you think you want to go forward or not. Some of the benefits that has been mentioned by the public, the improvement of officer safety, the reduction and the resolvement of civilian complaints, improve evidence quality, reduce agency liability, improve officer-agency accountability, make cases more prosecutable, improve officer professionalism, improve community perceptions, simplify incident review, improve training, reduce use of force, although I don't know if we could reduce it any more than we have.
Lower than it already is, yeah.
And strengthen police leadership. So, those are some of the benefits to the program. I will, I'm going to finish it up, but right now, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Sergeant Ken Skroy, veteran officer of our agency, does a lot of wonderful things at the Police Department, and I'm very pleased with the work that he did on this project. So, Sarge?
Sergeant Skroy, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Good evening, everyone. I'll introduce myself, Ken Skroy, Sergeant Yorktown PD. Obviously, here in reference to our body camera testing. I have this PowerPoint to present to everyone. So, if you're ready, you can hit the slide, please. So, over the course of the last seven months or so, we sampled three different body cameras in the field with the Yorktown Police Department. They were FirstNet, which is an AT&amp;T, WatchGuard, which was a Motorola, and Axon. In reference to FirstNet, this was a cellphone that also functioned as a body camera. The cellphone was very large and had poor functionality. Based on the testing, it was not ideal to utilize a cellphone that also functions as a body camera, which was our result for that one. Slide, please. In reference to WatchGuard, it was easy to use, had good field of view, had good battery life. We can get unlimited cloud storage, has a pre-record function that will capture video prior to being activated, has redaction software. Due to the design, the record button was often unintentionally hit, causing the camera to be activated for an extended period of time. There was also no reminder notification on this one to advise the officer that the camera is on and recording. And there's a, as you can see, there's a big bright red light on the front, which could become a tactical issue. Slide, please. The Axon that we tested, it had the best functionality of the three cameras, had good field of view and also the best video quality. It has a reminder notification to alert officers with a vibrate or a beep when the camera is activated. It has multiple microphones for enhanced audio, had a 12-hour battery life as well. There is a phone application that can be easily accessed in the field to view video. It has a pre-record function that will capture video prior to it being activated. It has technology that integrates an automatic activation of the body camera. The Axon Core Plus bundle being offered to YPD provides an upgrade also with our Tasers to a Taser 7, which is the most recent Taser that they're producing right now. Next slide, please. So, additional Axon features, Axon Respond, it improves officer safety and situational awareness by having a GPS capability for each camera. The system automatically tags calls for service to the body camera footage. Axon Fleet Signal activates body cameras with certain vehicle triggers that would be set. The Taser 7 Signal activates the body camera when the Taser 7 is armed, the trigger is pulled, or the arc is engaged. Signal Sidearm activates a body camera when an officer's firearm is removed from their holster. Each Signal activates any Axon body camera within a 30-to-50-foot range. So, out of all those things, if we would have those parameters, you know, it would set up and set each camera that was in that range, and they would automatically go on.
How does it tag the call?
Auto-tagging, it would be like, it would be connected to like what we have as a CAD system.
Right.
And it would just be, so if they put in like, let's say, a larceny, and then your dispatch times and go, it would talk to the camera.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand.
It would tell what the times and stuff that went down.
Okay.
Field of view, I think, is what he's looking to.
It's a very good field of view. It's like 280.
Is it 180 degrees?
Yeah, at least, yeah. It's got. Yeah, it would be mounted usually right in the middle of the chest or upper, depending on the person, but it would, it's got excellent field of view. These cameras did, they had good field of view for them.
I think the fact that it can activate itself if the officer uses his Taser, uses his gun, or whatever, and I think that that's really.
That's a great function.
Yeah.
To have.
Yeah.
That Motorola one was a little bit scary with the bright light center body mass. You know, that was, you know, that's point and shoot, basically, at that point.
Exactly.
Yeah, this does not have that, right, the Axon?
It has a faint light, but it's not like that one at all.
Yeah.
Right, you know? And again, like I said, it has features such as beeping and letting the officer know that it's on, because we had with the WatchGuard, you know, put your seatbelt on, that button was easily pushed in the middle, and it was going on and on and on. And then now it's recording, let's say, for an hour, a half hour, and the officer doesn't know it because it doesn't alert him. And then now, all this is being uploaded to the server, and then the guy that's doing all the server has to sift through all that, so it becomes a bigger issue.
Right.
You know, domino effect.
And how about the noise interference from going car or helicopter or plane or something? There's so many kind of noise, you know? Do you have any kind of data that, how can you isolate your camera recording versus the outside noise?
Well, the Axon had like four microphones on it, and it had the capability of, it kind of hones in on the surrounding noise around you, so it kind of would drown out the background noise. So, it does work in that capacity. Next slide, please. The Axon also features a redaction assistant, which allows for the redaction of faces and license plates. Comes with unlimited cloud storage, includes all video, photos, and documents in a single system. Analytics and audit tools allows for the monitoring of the system usage from video uploads to who has reviewed, shared, or deleted files. We have, that has configurable retention, so it's scheduled automatic retention period based on incident type or crime severity. Axon Performance allows for body camera video audits. That's an additional fee, but in reference to that, that's just like a specific extra add-on that you have, you can search officers, but you can still search it on their thing, and that's just, that just streamlines it. So, it's not you can't find the. It's not that you can't find the information, it's just they just put it in one place for you. So, it's not an added fee that, if that's something, but it's not necessary. And Axon Citizen also creates a public evidence submission portal that allows evidence to be collected from the public. That's also additional fee. And the way that we do our evidence now, it's a similar process, so it doesn't.
So, it's like if someone had like a cellphone video or something, they can upload it?
They could send it to their server, the Axon server, and it would go right to there. But we have a similar thing now with our evidence that it would easily streamline through, so.
Right.
Okay.
If the camera is on, in a real situation, the camera itself is recording as well as the, you know, somewhere, wherever is the police department, they have some kind of a standard place where they can store all the information directly live?
Yeah, it would go to, it goes to.
It goes to the cloud automatically.
Yes, it would go, it would upload to the cloud, and we'd have someone monitoring that whole server.
And the cloud storage you're saying for Axon is free? Because I think that was one of the things that we talked about when you were doing the beta-testing, was the cost associated with the cloud storage?
It's not free, I mean, they, there's a fee to it, but they have.
It's written into the whole package.
Yeah.
It's part of their package.
It's part of the package.
Let's get to that.
Okay.
You get a free set against who knives with this.
Slide, okay, thank you. In reference to the Axon Taser 7, their newest Taser, it has improved performance, straighter and faster cartridges, wirelessly connects to the entire system. Taser 7 Signal activates the camera when the Taser's arm trigger is pulled or the arc is engaged. In reference to the Tasers we have now, we began purchasing the Taser X2, which we currently have for use at YPD starting in 2013. Our current Taser X2 is being phased out by Axon, and they are no longer supporting the Taser camera battery attachment that we utilize. At this point, several of our Taser X2s have needed cost repairs or have been taken out of service because it's unfixable. So, they're getting rid of the Tasers that we currently have, and we have cameras on some of them, but once those go, they're only giving you a battery that has a certain life, and they have to be replaced pretty frequently.
That makes sense.
Next slide, please. In reference to WatchGuard, the quote, for a five-year contract, they gave us unlimited cloud storage. We were requesting 37 body cameras, we've come up with five charging stations, a camera charging station replacement after three years, their redaction software and camera mounts. Their five-year total was $119,280 for $23,856 per year, which it would break down to roughly. Next slide, please. The Axon, the Core Plus bundle that they were giving to us was a five-year contract, unlimited cloud storage for the 37 body cameras, the charging stations, the pro licenses, and administrator licenses, as well as camera charging station replacement. After every two and a half years, they would replace them. Next slide, please. Also with that package is 15 Taser 7s, the Taser 7 holsters for those Tasers, a Taser 7 charging dock, Taser 7 training and duty cartridges. It comes with auto-tagging, Axon Respond, Axon Sidearm Signal, Axon Fleet Signal, and Axon Taser 7 Signal.
Can I ask you something? Is this only the read-only, so you, nobody can edit it when you need it? It has to be only read-only?
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to, we, like.
You can read it, you cannot copy it, and nobody can change it?
No, the officer's not going to be able.
It can't be edited or altered?
It's not going to be able to be tampered with.
Right.
Exactly.
On the Taser 7s, do they have, do the Tasers themselves have the camera? Or do they lose that functionality since you now have it on the body cam?
When you, when you trigger the Taser, it sends a signal which automatically puts the body camera on your chest.
Versus the ones that you have which currently have the camera right built onto it, right?
In the battery, kind of under the thing. So, it would, it all sends the signal straight to the body camera that the officer's wearing.
And I do have a question.
Sure.
I was Records Management Officer. You guys will have to begin a policy of what may or may not be available with regard to this body cam.
Once we make the decision.
Adam, can you just give him your microphone, just so he can use that mic, so we can make sure we can hear what he's saying?
Hello there. Once we make the decision as to whether or not we're going to go with the body cams, then it's policy time. That's where administration, PBA, and the attorneys gets involved. We come up with a policy that is, you know, is sound, much like our other accredited policies. And we would craft, you know, a policy that is consistent with New York State accredited policies regarding body cams.
So, just to touch a few of these things that are being offered, like we previously discussed, the auto-tagging would be with the CAD system, it would automatically tag like the times and the stuff that the officer went on, so that would be automatically linked to the video. Axon Respond is a GPS-based thing, so for example, if something were to happen, someone, an administrator or someone like that could log on and see the location. Once the camera, if the camera is on, they could see where the camera is location-wise. So, if the officer, you can't get in touch with the officer or something, at least we know where he is by the GPS coordinates of the camera as long as it's on.
Now, anywhere in, so the officer can be anywhere in Yorktown, correct?
As long as the camera's on, we can see, we'd be able to see where.
Okay, because that's been a big problem.
Where his GPS coordinates were.
Okay.
The Axon Sidearm Signal would be, work as, once your firearm was left the holster, it would send a signal similar to the Taser, to the camera, camera would automatically start recording. The Axon Fleet, they have a thing that they put in the car where they can make your camera automatically go on with parameters set, such as if your lights go on, the camera goes on. If you hit like a certain speed, the camera goes on. So, things that can be set that can make the camera automatically go on. Next slide, please. So, for the Axon, the five-year total was $297,065, which comes out to about $59,413 per year. They have an option to do a 10-year contract based on their 2021 pricing, as of now what they gave. If a 10-year contract is done, the Taser 7s would be replaced after six years. So, we would get new equipment with that as well, with the camera software. We have the option to distribute payments at any denomination over the course of the contract. So, you can pay over the 10-year, 5-year, it doesn't have to be equal. You can pay and, you know, they can do it however would be beneficial. Next slide, please. By bundling the cameras and Taser together with the Axon Core Plus plan, there is a 27% savings per user per month. The Axon representative discounted the sales price an additional 5% for us. We have the option to turn in our current Tasers to Axon for a credit that will be deducted from the price as well. Obviously, the credit price would be determined after they assess what we give them. Next slide, please. So, Yorktown has 59 sworn officers and requesting 37 body cameras. I did some research with the neighboring jurisdictions. P-Skill PD currently uses Axon body cameras and has 37 body cameras for 57 sworn officers. Austinic PD currently uses Axon body cameras and has 60 body cameras for 55 sworn officers. Other notable agencies currently using Axon body cameras are the Westchester County Department of Public Safety. NYPD used WatchGuard at one point, but they switched over to Axon. And the New York State Police just signed a contract with Axon as well. So, they'll be rolling out shortly with them. Next slide, please, thank you. So, my recommendation is for the Yorktown Police Department to go with the Axon body cameras and upgrade to the Taser 7. The price difference between WatchGuard and Axon is due to the fact that you're getting many more essential services from Axon. Our current Tasers have a limited lifespan. By getting the Taser 7 with the Core Plus bundle, it's a significant savings, and if we were to purchase them separately. WatchGuard does not have a Taser product, and since we already use an Axon Taser, it's in our best interest to utilize one product that integrates the technology together. I believe it is extremely beneficial to have the Axon Signal for the Sidearm, Taser, and Fleet, which all comes with this bundle, because everyday officers are put in stressful situations, and this will automatically activate the Axon body cameras within 30-to-50-foot range when the specifications are met that we discussed before. So, Axon is the leader in the industry when it comes to body cameras, and there's a reason why all these agencies are using Axon over the other products out there. So, I'd like to thank everybody for their time. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you.
There are 37 camera, so when shifts changes, how do you, you know, how do you give the camera to somebody else and what they have to check it out, you know? Yeah, okay.
I'll start, and you can finish.
Sure.
Under this plan, any regularly assigned patrol officer would have their own cameras. This way, it's their footage, their data. If their assignments change during the year, or we can have the cameras reprogrammed to reflect that this is Officer so-and-so on this camera, and it's a much cleaner way of outfitting patrols with these cameras. And it's consistent, as you can see, with the other neighboring agencies, the way that they outfit their officers. Anything else?
No, that's basically, we're speaking to the other agencies, that's kind of how they do it as well, because when you sign on as the officer, your name's on it and everything like that, it's just easier stream on, this is your camera, kind of like a radio. Everybody has their own radio, it's assigned to them, they will, you know.
I don't think I would like, would want to be switching off with another person.
Exactly, so now, it, you know, once something's yours, you have more pride and ownership. You know, you take care of it, it's yours, you own it, and, you know, it's going to be assigned to you, your name's on it, so.
And then the safety and security of the device is also very important, you know? Because there are people, you know, they can turn on and off switch, you know, and without knowing it, you know, then it may not be functioning. Because if the thing does not work, do you get any alarms, you know, you know, or working before you get into the car? How do you, you know, so if you are one, you know, it works, you know? Ignition, everything works, right?
Yeah, I mean, very, you can push the button, it'll beep, it'll vibrate, and it will give you a little icon on the top which tells you it's recording, and it will say "record" on it, so you'll know that it's recording. When you stop, it'll tell you that it stopped, so.
Do you know if we own or lease the equipment, if we go into contract with them?
I believe it's ours, we own it.
So, ownership?
Ownership.
Okay.
That being said, no, if I may, that being said, the evolution of technology in this day and age, it seems like stuff is just exponentially exploding, so to speak, of advancing. Is it wise to stay with this unit for, what was it, five years?
Five or 10.
Five or 10 years?
With this one, every two and a half years, they update us to the most frequent that they have.
Okay.
And if we did a 10-year, the Tasers would give us every six. So, after two and a half years, they give you the option, they say, you know, and some agencies might be like, this is our newest one, and some are like, we like the one that we have. And they'll say, okay, we'll talk to you again in another two and a half years, and you can get the next one. But every two and a half years, they'll give you brand-new equipment.
Smart company.
To upgrade, because they're constantly changing things.
Okay.
Two questions on my mind and one comment. First, the comment of the fact that, you know, there are all those safeties to start the camera on the Axon, that's, you know, that's so important for the safety of the officer, because you're not saying, oh, wait, you know, I have to press my button.
Yeah.
And, you know, so that's wonderful, I think, a great, great asset. So, my two questions, one is, do they do service on these, under the contract, or are we responsible if there are any repairs that are needed?
If there's any damage to it, no questions asked, they'll replace it or fix it.
Okay, great. And then my second question relates to the numbers, the 37. Is it 37 patrol, or does that include the resource officers?
It would include the patrol, the sergeant supervisors, everywhere that's on patrol. It wouldn't include the resource officers and the school for that.
Okay. If I could suggest, I don't know if you want to talk to the schools to see if they want to add it, I don't know if it's a worthwhile thing, I don't, you know, but I'm, you know, I know this is more for specific situations, but if the schools want to go in for it.
I think the schools have their own cameras and have their own regulations, right, Chief, on how they, this sort of thing would transpire?
Yeah, if we looked at making the leap here, I would talk to Superintendent Hatter and Superintendent Lyons to see if they'd be comfortable. I'd say more so in the high schools than the, I don't think there's a need to have it in the elementary schools or, you know, maybe the middle school, we could discuss that. But, yeah, that's a conversation that I can easily have. We have a great relationship with both of the superintendents.
I want to comment. I want to thank you, Bob, I want to thank you, Sergeant, for fulfilling what we told the public we would do. And when we did the meetings earlier this year, I only, time has gone by so crazy.
I know.
It was one of the, one of the things, I believe, in the.
Final report.
Final report. And, you know, we just want to thank you for doing that, for following through with what you said. And I don't know about the other members, but the Axon sounds like it's the best system for our department, for your department.
I agree. I think that, you know, your testing of the things and how they worked out in the field and so on and so forth is what the most crucial part is of this whole thing, is that how the guys interact with the unit that they have to carry on their bodies from the time they get in that police car at the beginning of the tour till the time they get out the end of the tour. So, kudos to you guys that, you know, took the time and effort to review those several and come up with the best one for us.
And I have things to say that the neighboring town, the county, and the New York City Police Department and state, so this is a good choice, you know, yeah, really wonderful, thank you.
You know, I just want to tell the public, you started this way before we started the, what's it called?
The CCSE, the Community Coalition on Safety and Engagement.
Yeah, you had already begun your, yes, your.
Beta-testing.
Beta-testing on the cameras, and thank you.
Sergeant Skroy, great job.
Thank you for your time.
Fantastic job.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Welcome back, Chief Noble?
Well, thank you. It's been a while. What I'm here to talk to you about tonight is the, basically, the training and support and the supervision of this new program if we were to adapt this, the body-worn cameras. The cameras are a tremendous responsibility, and we all talk about accountability and transparency. So, I will say that in years past, and you're here long enough to know, you know, Alice and Tommy, you're familiar with our makeup. Back in the.
Back in the day, we had a chief, a captain and, and a few lieutenants.
Yes, you did.
And, um, slowly but surely, it kind of, it, it weaned away and it was lessened and, you know, while I do have, you know, fifty nine, seven of them are allocated to the schools. I get them for three or four weeks a year on, on the road, they're in the schools. And quite honestly, it's a great investment. It's where they should be and where they're needed. And, you know, aside from the safety and security at schools, you know, there's a lot of, you know, bluster in the media, you know, about, uh, national media, not the local. Local's very fair with us, but the national, about, you know, police relations with the community. And, um, you know, having the, the police officers that we have in the Lakeland Elementary Schools and, and in all the elementary schools. You know, it, it allows the kids, when they're forming these, these opinions, and we all say that, you know, they're, they're our future, they're, they're going to go out there and shape our country. And, uh, you know, our country is going through a lot right now, but it allows the kids to really build a relationship and get to know a police officer. Not what they hear on TV or what, you know, what somebody tells them, misinformed, you know, they've got a cop in that school that they see every day and say hello to and, and can chat up about, you know, just about anything. And that's where, you know, you often say we lead from the front. Well, we are. I mean, we're changing the narrative little by little by having those cops in schools. So I deviated a little bit from where I am. So what I'm asking for is essentially, and, and Tommy, I'm dating you because I think we had more cops when the Jefferson Valley Mall was being built than we do now, essentially. If you take those school resource officers out of the equation.
It's possible.
I used to have a traffic division, we used to have a, you know, the, the special dispose and, you know. Well, you know, this is now maybe an opportunity, um, to try to, try to get that back. But at the very minimum, um, I'm looking to promote a sergeant to lieutenant's position. And, uh, you got my slide up there, Maura? You don't have mine?
No, I don't have yours.
Oh, I sent a PowerPoint. I sent, uh, I sent a PowerPoint for that one.
Sorry. Hold on. I thought he, I thought he shared the right one.
Yeah, there were supposed to be two.
We're getting our sea legs on it.
Getting our sea legs back here, I apologize.
That's okay. I mean, I could, I could take you through it and give you a, a paper copy, but, you know, I didn't know if the folks, you know, wanted to see the, see the PowerPoint. I'll walk you through it and I'll send it to you.
Yeah, let's wait and see if we got.
But, uh, yeah, check and see.
Sent the updated, uh,
Right, prior to that.
Prior to.
Yeah, there were two, two PowerPoints.
Uh, let's see. Is it a BWC presentation?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry about that. Understood. My apologies, I thought it was both the same.
Things get, things get hung up in my outbox, you know, they, they do, so I wasn't, you know, but I, I always sent that because that's what I was going to be speaking to here.
Yep, and I don't know where.
He'll be right back.
Yep. Give us two seconds Chief, we'll get it right up for you.
Oh, fantastic.
My apologies.
All right.
I can get it up.
Hmm? You can get it up, thanks. I apologize. I, I just forwarded it over to you.
Okay.
I thought they were the same presentation, it's my fault.
Oh, no problem. Look, and, and, and before I present, there's, there's some filler time that I can take out while we wait here, you know, with, uh,
You got some jokes there?
You sat down? Come on, I stood with you, you got to stand with me now, all right?
You got to turn a little closer, yeah?
It's, um, it's important that we all realize with body cams, that the field of vision, while it is a hundred and eighties, it's, you're, you're not seeing something from an officer's eyes and while you may be able to get a feel for the emotion and the adrenaline that, that is going through a certain issue. It's just, uh, you know, it's, it's not like, it's not like the real thing. And any article or any, any educated article that you, that you will see will discuss, you know, the adrenaline and just, uh, you know, the emotional aspect of a split second decision where thankfully our officers are very well trained, so it's like muscle memory most times, but you can't account for everything. Body cams do give you a sense of what happened there, but it's not everything. It's, it's a snapshot, it's a snapshot in time, but it does promote accountability and transparency. It, it, there's no deniability of that, but it's not the whole story. I mean, that's what we get into afterwards. But, you know, any chance that I have or any opportunity that I'm presented with to, to be able to share that information, you know, I just want to put it out there that, um, you know, the split second, uh, decisions that a police officer, you know, has to make, um, sometimes that, um, that video just, it, it doesn't tell the whole story sometimes.
You know, I worked in TV, so you get to see what the camera sees.
Right.
There, you don't get that large landscape that the officer has gotten. He may be able to add to
Yep.
this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think people have to understand.
Similar to tunnel vision.
They do. But listen, and, and like I said, I, I, you know, I, I wouldn't be up here, I'd be coming up here saying, hey, look, I don't, I don't think it's for us. The easiest thing for me to, for me to say is, you know, hey, we've, we've got no complaints, we've got no use of, you know, use of force issues, I presented all the data. But, you know, in this day and age, it could be tonight or tomorrow that one of my officers gets involved in something and there's, you know, that, um, you know, that's a public issue and, and, and that this, I think ultimately this is beneficial to my officers, um, in all honesty.
How many shots, you know, how many pictures per minute or second, the camera?
You stumped the chief.
It's camera.
I don't know. I'd have to, can? What was the question, Councilman?
How many pictures a minute or a second?
It's just, it's just video footage, right? It's just video footage.
Yeah, but you know, the video could be HD and you know, how many pictures, I have a camera, you know, the highest resolution, so how many?
There you go.
That's a very important part of the camera, you know, thank you.
It seems to be the top of the line, so.
That doesn't mean anything, okay.
All right, so, thank you, Maura, next slide.
That'd give you very accurate.
So I'll begin. Okay, so, what I would call the new lieutenant's position would be the Training and Support Service Commander. I'm going to get into the, uh, the responsibilities that would, uh, be given to the, uh, to this proposed lieutenant's position. Then of course, if you're, you know, promoting a sergeant to lieutenant, I would need to promote a police officer to sergeant in order to backfill that. And as I said, with, um, you know, the, the amount of officers that we had in, in the, in the early to, to mid eighties to where we have now, if we can get a, get a police officer with all of the, um, the buildings coming to town and, and, and everybody that wants to, you know, you've made this a destination. So hopefully, uh, people are bringing the money, you know, with them and we can, uh, it's getting, it's getting busier and a little more populated. So if we can get a police officer out there to finish this off, I'd love to put that officer out as a traffic officer, to be able to hit the roads and make our roads safer. That is exactly where I would put that officer. I'd put them in a, in a, in a traffic, uh, traffic division to help Officer Rohr because he's a one man show right now.
I was going to say that would give us two then, right?
It would give us two. We used to have four. It would give us two and then sergeant, right, well, right now it's Sergeant Dillon, he's the traffic sergeant. Whoever, if he does that again next year, you know, he's also a fill-in, he's a fill-in sergeant, so he rotates when, when this sergeant's on vacation or this sergeant's at training. You know, so there, there isn't a whole heck of a lot that, that he's out there solely devoted to traffic. So again, the officer, if you were to, to, to give me an entry officer, he'd go right to the traffic division.
Trader Joe is going, Trader Joe's, I guess, that's going to be a challenge for you.
Yeah. Yep. No, like I said, we're going to be bringing a lot more people to town and we're moving a lot more people to town with the, with, with what's being discussed, so. Yeah, I really, I mean, with, with this whole body worn camera, I need the supervision, but it's also not only time for a body worn camera, it's time for a body. So that, uh, that'd be, that'd be wonderful. So, Maura, next slide please. You can see our organizational chart. This, um, this is also shown to our, our accreditation assessor, we passed again, I'll let you, I'll let you know that. It's, it's not formal yet, but, uh, we passed again. That's our organizational chart. It flows from me as the Chief of Police. The three lieutenants right now, Patrol Operations and the Staff Division. And, uh, there are two administrative sergeants, one oversees the Detective Division and one, uh, is the Assistant to the Patrol Division Commander who handles many of our scheduling, uh, scheduling issues and also he is the supervisor for our seven SROs as well. So, um, again, pretty, pretty busy chart. We're, um, you know, we're kind of, we're getting stretched a little bit thin, but, um, again, that's, that's what you have there. Next, uh, next chart. Why a lieutenant position? Accountability and responsibility of a command level officer. Sworn video evidence must be completed by a member of the rank of lieutenant. I'm recommending it, I mean, it's, I have the word must in there, but, um, you know, there are going to be, if, if there is something that's, you know, controversial or, you know, something that, um, you know, is, is something that's, that's going to come under scrutiny. You know, you want a lieutenant overseeing that video and managing, managing that, and that's not to say that a sergeant or a patrol officer, it, it's just not, I think it's unfair to put them in that, in that position when, uh, when a lieutenant, you know, should be, should be overseeing that and doing that job. It's that, it's that important, um, for the accountability, transparency and the responsibility that comes with this program. Again, time and privacy to view hours of body worn camera video. Uh, you know, if it were, if, if this lieutenant position wouldn't, is not to be approved, I'd probably have to delegate this to one of my other lieutenants and it's going to be probably, you know, twelve hour days. Uh, you're looking at overtime pretty much on a regular basis with the, um, with the discovery mantra that's upon us now. You know, the, the person who's probably the least excited about this program is the, uh, the Yorktown branch of the District Attorney's Office because we don't have a lot of camera footage to show them. They have to, you know, kind of watch, watch this as well and, uh, like the, the video that we have to watch and, and send over there. Again, redaction issues, privacy issues, people's constitutional rights, um, that's why I'm recommending a lieutenant. The ability to properly maintain the privacy of the public, I just mentioned that, uh, with the, with the redaction and some people not wanting to see themselves, you know, on video. And, um, now moving away from, um, the body worn cameras, this lieutenant would also oversee department in-service and external training. Uh, in-service training, uh, when I, when I took over as chief in, in sixteen, we were doing about six thousand hours a year. We're closing in on twelve thousand hours. We've doubled. We're, we're, we're going to double it in the next year or two with the amount of training hours that we're sending our officers to attend. Again, that's, you know, when, when you first, uh, you know, brought me in, that was, that was a commitment that I, that I explained to the board that training, training is critical to a professional police department. If you're going to have a professional police department, they have to, they have to receive the training and, you know, not only should they get it, they feel better about getting it. And it gives them more confidence to go out into the field and, and, and do their jobs properly.
I think it pays off.
Better doubt.
Right?
Better doubt.
Yep. Next, next slide please. The Training and Support Services Division Commander, uh, report directly to the Chief of Police. Act as a department training officer and identify and coordinate all in-service and individual training needs and programs. Uh, for those, for those who are not familiar with that, in-service training, we, uh, we pretty much do ten months out of the year. COVID threw a little wrench into that last year, but, um, during, um, July and August and, um, at December, sometimes we don't train either because it's just a low attendance, you know, months, people are using their, their vacation and accrued time off those months. But other than that, more, more times than not, nine months out of the year, we're, we're doing something, uh, valuable in-service, in-service training. That's, uh, you know, below one hundred with the, the driving and the defensive driving, also, um, you know, implicit bias, principal policing, uh, you name it, firearms, first aid, the response to hazardous conditions, incident command, uh, responses, uh, it's, it, the list goes, goes on and on. This lieutenant would maintain and manage department training records in conformance with the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services. The scrutiny, um, from DCJS, just, you know, it grows with a lot of the mandates. They want to see your training, they want to see what you're training on, they want to see your hours and, um, and the, the amount of hours per officer. The fourth thing is accountable and responsible that New York State mandated training, including New York State Executive Order two oh three, training objectives are met or exceeded on an annual basis. Again, our commitment to being accountable and transparent with that. Manage and coordinate and promote the Department of Crime Prevention and Community Relations Program. There's nothing I enjoy more than, than getting out and, and meeting, you know, meeting the public and going out and speaking, whoever, whoever asks, I, I try to make myself available to go out and speak to different groups. But again, I, I just don't have a lot of time to identify different, different groups that we should, so I'd like for this lieutenant to actually do what we do very well and make it even that much better, to get us out into the community a little more and speak with groups that maybe we haven't spoken with, to identify that, allocate the time. Have the officers, you know, the officers that should be speaking assigned to, to speak and then, um, you know, that's something that, that I would support wholeheartedly and, and, and show up at, at, at those events or, or speaking engagements and, and try to enhance that. But, um, I think that having a lieutenant to lead to that would, would actually coordinate that, uh, a great deal. Right now falls upon, um, you know, one of our juvenile officers and quite honestly, he just doesn't have, have the time because he manages evidence as well. So it's, um, it's just, um, it's not, not easy. Next slide, Maura, thank you. The management and accountability for all digital evidence. With the body worn cameras, there's going to be quite a bit of digital evidence. And, um, that segues right into number seven. Manage and be accountable for the retrieval, inspection and dissemination of discovery material to the office of the Westchester County District Attorney. That is digital video amongst other things and, uh, it's the coordination of the body worn camera, uh, video with the written, well, the, all the written data and, and reports that we'd be, we'd be submitting. Number eight, manage the Yorktown Police Department Body Worn Camera Program and, uh, the Fleet In-Car Video Program. Responsibilities include, but are not limited to, the retrieval, inspection and dissemination of body worn camera and fleet in-car video footage to the District Attorney's Office. Number nine, manage the York-
On the, on a number eight, you, the cars, the cars you have now, they already have the video?
We know, we need, we need more. Ours, ours are getting kind of outdated and I couldn't really afford to re-outfit them.
But we, but we do have, do we have videos in the cars?
We've got a couple cars with, with, with videos, but, um, you know, I, I just think, um, if I, if I were to spend money on license plate readers, I'd rather do that than in-car videos.
Okay.
The smarter play is for the body worn camera video rather than the in-car video. And, um, you know, for my money, I'd rather spend on, on LPRs where I can see, you know, hopefully identify stolen vehicles, perpetrators in town and things like that. I'd rather spend my money on, on that than, than in-car videos.
I think what the better thing is having both because, um, what if the police officer doesn't have his body worn camera on?
He or she will have it on.
Okay.
But, like I said, if there's a way to do both, I'll try to do both. Yep. Manage the Yorktown Police Department Drone Program. The Chamber of Commerce five years ago generously donated a, um, a drone. Um, it's outdated, it's done, it's cooked. They don't service the, uh, the parts for it anymore. Uh, I think I have, um, a very generous local resident that is willing to donate a drone to the Yorktown Police Department.
Great.
Once again, and, um, again, I'd like to have this, this lieutenant, there's a lot that can be done, you know, with this, with this drone. Now Detective Taust, to his credit, you know, he was our drone commander, so to speak. He took the ball and ran with it.
He put a trust.
You know, but, um, again, I think this new lieutenant can, can actually manage this drone program and take it to new heights, so to speak, and to make sure it's utilized, uh, to our, to our and the community's benefit, all that much more. Uh, number ten, here's something that, um, I think could be very helpful to the Burge group and that is to manage the Yorktown Police Department Grant Applications and Grant Awards, identify grant opportunities and advise the Chief of Police of any grant applications and when applicable, work with department heads of town government in furtherance of acquiring grants. This lieutenant could have a monthly meeting, but however, you know, however we want to meet with, um, with the, you know, with the, the Burge, right?
The Burge, yeah.
The Burge, yeah. I mean, that was, that was money well spent. I mean, any money that, that they can secure as far as the acquisition of grants is wonderful. And, uh, this lieutenant, I would have him or her work hand in hand with, um, with, in that aspect. Next slide. This lieutenant shall act as the Yorktown Police Department Staff Division Commander in his or her absence. And lastly, while it is expected that the Training and Support Services Division Commander will complete most or all of the aforementioned duties and responsibilities on his or her own, the TSS Division Commander shall have the authority to request the assistance of the Administrative Sergeant, of the Detective Division, the Assistant to the Patrol Division Commander and the Assistant to the Staff Division Commander. The TSS shall coordinate the aforementioned requests for assistance with respective division commanders. Any conflicts of said requests shall be brought to the attention of the Chief of Police if the respective division commanders cannot come to an equitable agreement on task. task delegation and achievement. So this lieutenant is not getting somebody to kind of help them along with them. Rather, this lieutenant would lean on the support staff that we have already, you know, identified and have in, within the membership of the Yorktown Police Department. So that's, that's kind of where we're at right now. Next, next slide? Oh, you have it? Excellent. So you have it, the roughly $300,000 over a five-year agreement with Axon. The, the training on the equipment, once we commit to them, they send the equipment from what I hear from other agencies. They send it up pretty quick and they would obviously train us on the, on the, on the equipment. But if we are gonna go down this road, the creation and adoption, you see, I do have it, of, of the body worn camera policy. And, you know, the goal is to have this in place by 2022, by the beginning of next year. And, you know, we're heading into budget, budget talks and things like that. So we can kind of figure out what you have the money for and what you don't. If I, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of, kind of hard for me because you all know our budget and I don't have the, the money for any of this. It'd kind of be that dirty D-word, defund, if, if, if I had to, if you came up with it out of, out of my budget as it exists right now. But I, I leave that to, to you all to, to kind of figure out, to see if it, the, the bang is worth the buck, so to speak. Any questions?
I have a question. You just mentioned about the drone. The community using their own drone in their community, is there any restriction from the police department or the town?
Well, we need to be, have an officer that has an FAA license. You can't operate a drone, you know, for us anyway, and not be licensed with the, with the FAA. So we'd need to identify an officer to, to center that schooling. It's been tough to, to locate. We've been on a waitlist up in Riscany, up at the State Emergency Management Office. We've had a few officers on a waitlist to try to get training up there for, for drones. But right now, our drone is, is really not flyable. We have a small one actually that we can get inside of, of, of buildings. But our drone that was, like I said, donated five years ago, it's just, it's, they don't support the equipment and it's just not, not usable anymore.
But I'm just talking about the residents of the town, you know, can they use it to certain limits and like that and interfere with, you know-
No, we're not loaning out that drone.
We do not want to encourage to use a drone in the community because, you know, the wires, you know, a drone can go a little bit higher, higher than electrical wire. It can mess up so many things, you know?
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah.
Chief, great job as always. This was great to get final numbers on and understand exactly what this program would look like. I think it's important that we actually have a conversation with the Burge sooner than later to see if there's some grant opportunities out there for these types of programs, if the board feels that it's necessary for us to implement. Obviously, I think the board needs to deliberate on it and-
Yes.
Have some conversations with the comptroller.
I think, I thought I heard her fall out of her chair up there.
She, she, yeah, I, I was thinking the same. We can speak with our state representatives. I know that we saw a couple of grants come across Grants Gateway earlier in the year pertaining to some camera programs. So again, working with our consultants at LeBerge, I think would be a very wise call for us to make to see, now that we know what the cost is, to see how we can fund it.
Well, the question we had was, we had to do all that paperwork for the state and so what, what are we gonna get in return?
When you say the paperwork, do you mean the accreditation?
Yeah, no, not the accreditation.
Or you mean the O203?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
It's a great question. I don't have a great answer. I, I would hope that we got something, but we'll see.
This was something I thought we were looking at getting from them, the payment for.
There would hopefully be some state funding, but I'm not aware of any at this point in time that have been made available.
If you could strong on someone, we're, we're right behind you.
All right.
So we'll collaborate on that on our end, but again, as always, fantastic presentation. You, once again, due diligence was clearly done, examining the different type of companies and, and prototypes that are available for the community and we greatly appreciate it.
Oh, I'd like to compliment Sergeant Groin. Did a great job.
Did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Do you want to add? Either of you want to add?
I, 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 probably the only thing is, I think is it's an asset to have them for each officer that's out on the road. Even if it's just a traffic stop situation where somebody says that they cursed at him. You know, it's, it's a bigger asset to have them than not to have them. And it will prove that the officer is right 99 and 99, 100% of the time that what he said happened, happened and now you're gonna have it recorded.
No, like I said, no, no, I, I, I get it. And I have a lot of faith, you know, I mean, the numbers are what the numbers are. I report to you every quarter about, you know-
Yes, you do.
Public initiated complaints and I don't want to jinx us, but-
You know what? The public is out there with their cameras photographing everything.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
And we need to, we need to be able to tell the story as well.
Yeah, and we're fortunate. I mean, we, we, we get a lot of support. You know, Yorktown supports our, our agency, you know, very much so. And, and like I said, that's why we-
And deservedly so.
We try to, right, we try to, we try to share a lot of information and, you know, and, and that's what I'm gonna do actually right now, if I could, if I could switch gears. I would like to ask each of you for the next few weeks, you each get a turn to share some information with the public. Can you all ask them to lock their cars?
Yes.
And then once they lock their cars, hopefully they've taken their fob and, and keys out of it and any, anything valuable. What's happening in the suburbs of Westchester and, and we're not immune to it here in Yorktown. We haven't been hit nearly as much as other jurisdictions have been hit, but we have had incidents where these unlocked vehicles, they're being rummaged through. That's, larceny is a larceny, but one person lost $1,200 that they left in their car because they left it unlocked. Other people are just losing their cars because they're being stolen. Now, what is happening here, and like I said, law enforcement sometimes can be proprietary and, and there can be silos. Quite honestly, these cars are being utilized to commit crimes in areas like Bridgeport, New Haven, Patterson, New Jersey, and, you know, even down the Bronx. That's where we're finding these cars. What's happening is, is the, the, the people behind it that are stealing these cars more often than not are juveniles. They're less than 18 years old. They belong to gangs in these, in these communities and, you know, they come up here in, in one or two cars, four or five deep in each car, and they'll hop out, run into driveways, pull door handles and they're looking for the fobs or the keys. I mean, if they have that, then they've got a car and they're off and running.
Right.
And like I said, they're using that. We just had a, a still shot of an incident car stolen in Putnam County with the, like I said, gang banger holding a gun, you know, in, in, was it New Haven or some?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was Connecticut, Connecticut place. But, you know, if you could remind people to lock their cars, take their keys out, you'd be doing everybody a tremendous service because hopefully selfishly, they'll move on to another community. They'll move on to another town. If enough people lock their cars up, you know, and, and for the people to say, I shouldn't have to, I mean, it's, it's locking your car. I mean, you live in a safe town. I mean, thankfully, the crimes that we do have, a lot of them are property crime. They're not violent. These are crimes of opportunity. We're looking, looking to eliminate these crimes of opportunity. And I think, you know, listen, we're a lot of places and that's why crime is low here. I mean, you go out there and drive around, you're gonna run into a Yorktown police officer pretty soon. I mean, the methods of patrol and operations, the officers that are out there are covering a lot of grounds, are checking a lot of different things and, you know, the appearances that, you know, we've got a lot of people out there. But, you know, for the folks out there who say, well, why don't they catch these guys? Well, we did. We caught, we caught a group that did about 40 larcenies in the Fox Meadow Road, you know, up around Cronpons School area. That was last summer. We, we caught a few guys. They, you know, they were, I think they were from Mount Vernon, if I'm not mistaken. You know, we caught them. But these other ones, even if we catch them, they're out. They're, they're, they're out and they'll be back up here probably, probably the next night. I mean, they're, they're, they're getting kicked loose. They're juveniles. So I'm-
And that's why they come here.
We're trying to make it, yeah. So I mean, if Brian Marshaus is watching this tonight, he can feel free to put it into Yorktown News. We're trying to really get the word out. We put it out on Nick's, so we put it out on our Facebook page.
Nick's behind you. He got you.
What's up, Brian?
Nick's here. Nick, Nick from Yorktown News, yeah.
You've got a great head of hair.
So, um-
So do you, Bob.
Yeah, thanks. But lock, lock your, lock, lock your cars. It's easy. I mean, I'm, I know I'm belaboring the point. Hold on, I'm gonna let you ask your question, but, you know, I just, I don't want to lose my train of thought here and it's, it's simple. It, it really, really is. So I, I don't want to beat it to death, but, but thanks. Yes?
A remote starting, you know, it's easy to get it and start the car. They know how to do it.
Yeah, and usually when they steal your car, your garage opener is in there, so-
They have the cell phone. They can do the cell phone, okay?
And they have access into your house.
But, you know, as far as, like I said, as far as catching them, we've had pursuits that we've had to terminate because we can't risk life-
Right.
-to recover property. And these, you know, these pursuits, you know, we did the best we could. One, one of the vehicles, one of the stolen vehicles crashed, I think down on a 134 area and it was a handgun found, you know, found in the car. So even if we do catch these kids, who the heck knows? We're gonna wind up in a shootout, you know, and that's something that none of us want.
Right.
You know, so again, that's, that's the safest way to do it.
Lock your cars, Yorktown.
You know, exactly, man. Lock, lock it up. Whatever headline you want, you want to put out there. But please.
You lock it up.
If we had, if we had problems, you know, talking about crime with, with porch pirates or no?
No, not really. No.
Let's lock it up. Let's not talk about it.
That's usually the holidays.
Somebody will want to-
Traditionally, yeah. No, we, we do not have that. Secondly, on a more positive note, I just want to, you know, get, get the word out there again, National Night Out. It's our first foray into this, you know, community engagement. Again, something that we do very well. We're gonna be up at Granite Knolls from 6:00 to 9:00 PM on August 3rd. It's the first Tuesday in August. That is National Night Out across the country.
We can do early. We can go early then.
We can do an early town board meeting at the bar and then move over to-
At the bar?
At the bar.
I thought you said bar too. I got excited, but you can convince Councilman Diana here about outdoor, outdoor meetings. That's fun.
Oh, God.
We'll talk about that one. We'll deliberate on that one.
No outdoor meetings.
For this one, I'm gonna go.
You're, you're gonna make an exception now after all of our discussion.
Not if it's hot.
Right, right.
So I know-
National Night Out.
National Night Out. I'm gonna have a strong, strong showing there of police officers, you know, some of them on duty, the PBA. I think the sign-up list has gotta be a dozen, dozen people that have signed up to come on their own time. They're gonna be cooking burgers, dogs. I'll have our canines up there, probably, you know, motorcycle. I think they're gonna get a bouncy house, you know, for, for the kids. And, you know, Granite Knolls is a beautiful venue.
Yes, it is.
The only tricky part, I think, will be fitting everybody up there. We may have to close down Elena Stony Street at one point to, to accommodate everybody.
Man, I'm telling you.
Well, you're the cops. You can do that.
Absolutely. But I think it'll be a wonderful night. Again, we're gonna give it a shot. We haven't done it before. I think it's, you know, we've been locked in so long, we haven't been able to do no, you know, the coffee with a cop, pizza with the police, a lot of the things that we like to do. So we figured we'd blow it out, you know, really well and do, do this.
Just so you know, chief, the canines get very upset when you say you're gonna be cooking dogs and then you mention them right after that. So you'd have to say, hot dogs, okay?
Yeah, okay.
That comes from the next canine officer I happen to know. We've had a conversation.
Well, maybe with what, maybe with what you guys are gonna talk about later, they make that doggy hemp that relaxes them.
Oh, Jesus.
You'll be punished for that.
That was cool.
Yeah. Thank you very much, chief. Great job as always.
Thank you again. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your job.
Sergeant Groin, great job. Thank you very much. We have a couple of work session items that we want to just go through quickly. I'm gonna invite John Tegger, our Director of Planning, up. And we're gonna talk about September 11th. September 11th, as everyone should know, it's the 20th anniversary of September 11th this year. So we were looking for some creative ways to commemorate the attacks on September 11th. We've had quite a few discussions internally on the staff level. One of the things that we were really looking to do was to find a, a way to, find a way to recognize and remember those we've lost since 9/11. Obviously, we have the 9/11 memorial which is up in Shruboke, right next to the, the John C. Hart Memorial Library. We all know those, since then, we have lost quite a few people, quite a few members of our community due to 9/11 related illnesses. Just recently, we dedicated the Mike Houlihan Field and, and Chief left, but he was instrumental in that. But Mike Houlihan was a detective with the NYPD who died from 9/11 related illnesses. And so while we were endeavoring to try to recognize all those, we thought we might take a different tact because finding the names of everybody proves to be very challenging and you just, I, I just don't, I couldn't bear leaving somebody out. And so we decided that we'd go a different route. And so we were looking at a 9/11 20th anniversary mural to, to complement the current 9/11 memorial because we want to make sure that we keep them together, working with our Director of Planning and, and our engineering consultant. We've come up with a concept. So John, do you want to explain some of the details to that?
Of course. So on the screen, the left box there, you see the circle, which is the plan of the Shruboke Memorial. Towards the bottom is East Main Street and directly across sort of catty corner down would be the deli across the street. Up to the top right would be the, you can see the path that goes towards the library. Okay, so to the, to the left, you see the outer ring where the stone wall is. If you move your cursor in a little bit more, a little bit more, more, right there is the existing stone wall that people can sit on. Okay, so the, the, the wall is going to be constructed outside of that about seven and a half feet away. And if, if you go back more to where you were before, right there, no, come back a little, a little more, right there.
There we go.
Very good. Right there is the proposed wall and it is on center with the opening in the gazebo that houses the, the stone that has the names of the five citizens who died in the towers. The wall is about 14 and a half feet long. It is also curvilinear to match the roundness of the memorial. It is, as I said, about seven and a half feet from the back wall. So when you are standing either in the memorial or near the wall, you can regard this wall on which will be painted a mural that, as the supervisor said, will memorialize 9/11 and also subsequent deaths from that event. And do you have the picture?
More, I, nope, more, no problem. I just got it from the artist, Chris Rios, who apologizes for not being here. He's at a, he's down in Atlanta doing a mural, mural right now. Yep, it's in your inbox. I just sent it over to you. So I apologize for that.
Can you send it to this?
Oh, which one? Yep.
It stops me from having to run inside.
I can send it anywhere you want.
There you go.
And this is the latest rendition.
So John, the wall is not there now.
It's not there now.
Okay.
We have excavated the, in anticipation of doing the foundation, only because we know that time is getting close and we'll need the time to A, get the wall up and construct it and also leave enough time for the artist to paint the mural.
Which he has assured us, he, we will have done in time. And I just sent that over to you.
Well, I left me over there.
Well, it's just something different we don't have. And we also talked about, John, a plaque commemorating the 20th anniversary that we could put-
Yes.
By one of the, by the bench there.
Correct.
So we also were looking at that as well. But we thought it was just a, no, not there yet?
Not there yet.
Make sure I send it to the right place. Otherwise, someone's got a very nice-
While you're looking, by the way, the wall will be constructed of concrete block. It will be 10 inches thick. It will be curvilinear. It will be reinforced, of course. As I said, it's about 14 and a half feet in length, about seven feet high and will be parged with a smooth, you might want to relate it to what stucco looks like. So it'll be very smooth to give a nice surface for the painter to paint upon.
And the only thing we were debating is if we wanted to explore some type of plexi just in case, to protect against it.
Yeah, some type of plexi cover.
Right.
To span that area. So in case we get somebody that finds it necessary to deface that.
Okay. Good idea. Just, just the fact that we have to even think about it is-
Is sick.
Sickening. Yes, it is. It's sick.
So it's like every time we do something, I have to build a camera.
And we should build a camera into that anyway.
Yep. But, you know, so we have thought about that precaution just to make sure. But the, the individual is incredibly talented. Let's see.
He used to play handball when I was growing up on a, on a, on one of those walls.
It would have been similar except it wasn't curved.
Exactly right.
Curved is better. You don't have to move around as much.
That's, you're right, John.
The wall comes back to you all the time.
Comes back to you all the time.
And I thought it was also important that we keep, like I said, I wanted to make sure that we didn't- And I thought it was also important that we keep, like I said, I wanted to make sure that we didn't, that we kept the, the 9/11 memorial is in Shruboke. And I want, I thought it was very important, and I think we all agree that it was very important that we keep it in Shruboke. And so this is just an enhancement of the current memorial.
Yep.
Yep.
I'm hoping that it's, I'm hoping that it's there.
John, if you think it works, and Matt, I figured we could talk to the sons and see if we could dedicate five of the flags there to the five who perished, since we have the flags right at the memorial now.
Yeah, we could.
Do we know that it's only five?
Well, the five that perished in, on 9/11.
On 9/11.
On 9/11.
We, I've asked around to figure out if we can determine what the number would be, and it's so hard to, to really do that.
And we're losing more every day.
Every day, yeah. And then what happens if you, you know, we lose someone and they don't, you'd wanna add them, but, so we just thought it better, lists sometimes cause problems.
You know, I think sometimes we need to ask if there's somebody you know who passed away from a 9/11 related problem.
We could.
Contact us. Send your letter, call you.
Right. So this is the latest rendition from
I love that.
From Mr. Rios, again, local artist from the area, very, very talented. And again, trying to capture a lot of things in there, trying to capture, obviously, the, the service of our first responders, our soldiers, but also with those silhouettes, I think, capturing the fact that there were a lot of average individuals we lost that day. And, and so that's, that's...
That's beautiful.
I also find the unity of, you know,
Exactly.
us fighting against terrorism in there.
Okay. Any questions from the town board?
Nope.
No?
What do you need from us, John?
Usually some money.
Yep. We...
There we go.
And, and so this is gonna be part of, I think, a multifaceted 20th anniversary 9/11 response. Councilwoman Roker's gonna be working on a living history project, which I think is gonna be terrific. If you haven't attended the 9/11 ceremony that the Mahegan Fire Department puts on at Jefferson Valley Firehouse, it's incredibly moving, because they go through some of the primary accounts of some of their members that day, and how they responded, where they responded to. And so
That's our hope.
Our hope, and Councilwoman Roker's mission, is to capture some of those primary accounts. And as we've said, we're, we're losing people every day
Every day.
from 9/11 related illnesses, and we just don't want those memories or their voices to be lost forever. That's a great project as well. So we're gonna be doing steps, we're taking steps like this to commemorate the 20th anniversary. I think that the community's gonna be very pleased with the outcome. We're also looking to bring back the Beams of Light that we had up at the Granite Knolls.
That was great. That was great.
So we've been in touch with Mr. DeMozier about seeing what he needs in order to do that. So it's hard to believe 20 years ago, but here we are.
And I did hear Pat Folafer Chair about the money just a minute ago.
She's, no, she's good. No, we've kept her, no, we, she knows. We've kept her in the loop. It's okay.
You can hear it from here, right?
Excellent.
So, Pat, with everyone's blessing, I'd like to continue on with it.
Do you have any questions from the board?
Yeah.
We're good.
Yeah, we're good.
We're good.
Yep, yeah, great, John. Appreciate it. We'll have you back in two minutes.
Sure.
Let's bring back, let's bring our assessor, Kim Penner, to discuss the veterans exemption, something that Councilman Lachman brought to our attention. Councilman, do you wanna remind the folks at home about the veterans exemption from the county?
Westchester County has extended the veterans exemptions. I think Kim has all the details. I don't have my notes on me, so, you know, we've spoken about the, you know, updating the town as well.
Right. Just so you understand, the last time the exemption amount was raised was 2006.
Can you pull that down? There you go.
I'm too short.
So the last time that, that the town raised the veterans exemption was 2006, so 15 years ago.
Right. And by state law, we have, we can increase the amount of the ceilings.
Right.
Okay. Currently, we are at, for wartime, 54,000, comp at 36, and disability 180. Those figures are multiplied by the equalization rate to come up with the ceiling for the exemption amount. If your assessment is above $8,050, you will get the new amount. If it's below, you retain what you have, because it's 15% of the assessment or the ceiling amount. So it, it's really amounts to not very much money. We have approximately 1,195 veterans in our town retaining these exemptions. Their savings could be anywhere from 59 cents to $107.
$107.
Right. And that is based on this year's tax rate and this year's equalization.
That's what the veterans' savings would be.
Right. Additional savings.
In addition to what they're saving already.
What their saving rate.
Right.
That's just the increase. So anywhere from
59 cents.
Based on, based on the calculations, the formulas, and, and the assessment
Yeah.
up to $100 additional.
Yeah, that would be somebody who has a very small.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So if you gentlemen would like to do this.
Don't we have to have a public hearing?
We don't have to have, I, I'm not sure.
Mr. Rodriguez, do we have to have a public hearing on?
I did when, when the last time we did it.
We're here.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I don't have a problem with a...
We do need to pass a local law.
Well, that would require a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, then we
So then we're gonna have to instruct Mr. Rodriguez to craft the local law, so that we can refer it out and go through the proper process. But again, I think for our veterans, the fact that it hasn't been raised in 15 years, and, and now we have the county doing it, I think it only makes sense for us to be in sync with the county.
Yes.
The good thing is that it does not refer it out. She's the only person that can deal with it.
We'll refer it to her then.
Okay. All right, that's fine. That's fine.
So, so the board is in agreement that we'll move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much, Kim. Appreciate it. So, Adam, we'll have you draft, and for our veterans, of course. Well deserved. Anyone who puts on a uniform. We'll have you craft that, and we'll, we'll get that moving.
Friday.
By Friday?
That's Friday? That's another Friday, Friday. That's a Friday job. Okay. Excellent.
Pretty soon, everybody's, every day's
John, you gonna come on back?
Every day's gonna be Friday pretty soon, Adam.
John Tegater, Mr. Tegater, Mr. CRCA. We have another project that we're looking to get off the ground. Capital Improvement Project here for, and I'm sorry that the, the chief already left, but this would be the replacement of the police department and courthouse steps.
Thank God.
Something that's been
Yeah.
long overdue also, so we're looking to do that. Gentlemen, do you wanna take us through what we have and, and what the process is gonna be for, for this project to get off the ground?
All right. Well, I mean, what we were doing is
Just make sure you're stepping up to the mic there.
Oh, yeah, Tom will yell at me.
Yeah, you know.
I guess one of, one of the main changes is that we're relocating the handicap spaces
Right.
to where they're more usable. So we're moving them up the hill, sort of up toward the front corner of the courthouse.
Oh, that's smart.
We were, we were debating what the surface should be, and we were actually, I mean, it's a little rough, but the, the quality of the bricks we used, whatever it is, 25 years later, the bricks look fine. They've shifted around.
Yep.
So we're proposing to reuse them, to reset them.
Okay.
And, you know, just reconfigure as necessary.
Okay.
That's for the, for the plaza area?
For the plaza, so.
And the plaza actually sort of extends into the building too, so to sort of maintain the, the architectural integrity to the extent we can, because they use clay bricks, which are quite resilient.
Yeah, and the chief had a problem with the bricks.
Why does he like the bricks?
I think because the bricks are, everything about that area over there, I thought there was a, was a problem. John, I thought he had spoken to you about kind of making it all green.
All green?
Well, the back, I know the back portion over by the courthouse was going, there's, there's some extra, we'll call it pavement there, that we were gonna green.
So there is green going in here?
Yes.
So if you recall, you see the, the shapes that move like this, that's all steps right now. We are removing some of the steps and tightening down the actual area of the steps and replacing it with some planters. So it definitely is adding some green, greenery to it, while keeping somewhat
This is the area specifically he wanted to green.
And, yeah, and we'll be adding some green to there as well.
I don't know. Maybe I talked to him like three years ago, and that's not what he said.
Okay.
I'll, I'll just stay out of it.
Well, well, he does, he has seen this plan, and so has the, the judges, so they're okay with the plan. Happy to add more, more greenery to whatever
I think the biggest, I think the biggest thing was the handicap spaces, because right now there's limited handicap parking, and it's right over here, so you have to go past the handicap access point to park, to only go back up to the handicap access point to come over. So that, that was like the first thing that we saw when we looked at it, and we're adding an additional handicap parking spot there. So it eliminates them having to cross the parking lot. It also eliminates anyone using those parking spots to have direct access using the courtyard here. And then it's gonna allow us to, as Dan pointed out, either resurface or reposition the bricks, because they have shifted.
Yes.
And we'll, we'll, we'll go back one more time with the chief to determine whether or not we're gonna use the bricks, or if, if he's insisting on cement, then we can always make that change, if that's, if that's what's requested.
I mean, the one thing you'll see that's remarkable is the, the surface of them with concrete in an area that gets heavily salted. Usually takes less than 10 years before it's all pitted, and just doesn't look good.
Yeah.
So the clay, the clay bricks, given their age are remarkable, you know, other than the shifting part
Yeah.
the condition of them, generally speaking, is pretty good.
And that could be the compaction underneath wasn't done 100% at that point in time, settlement, so on and so forth.
Brick pavers, I, I don't know if they were ever reset, but it's, it must be like 25 years. They're there.
Question I have with them is I think that there was an issue at one point, to Alice's point, that there was water migration into the tunnel through the bricks. Now
Yeah.
will they be doing?
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, where you go into, to the tunnel into the EOC.
Right.
That's where the walls, kind of, the, the effervescence came out of the walls and so on and so forth, to cause the paint to buckle off of them and so on and so forth. I think they drylocked them or did whatever they did down there when they did that up. But I think that was part of the issue down there with the, with the water migration.
Yeah, that was something that they identified.
We did talk about that.
Yeah.
We're unsure of the path to take presently, but that's in discussion.
It is in discussion. Yep.
I mean, we could put a membrane above, or we could look about, you know, it's much like what we have to do with manholes.
Right.
There, there's grouts you can inject, and so we'll, we'll, you know, I haven't been in the tunnel, we'll have to say.
And they do have now the, 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 the poly sand, so to speak, that you can actually put in between the cracks of the bricks. That seals hard, so it doesn't allow as much water migration.
I know Councilwoman Roker has a question.
I always want, and this is for women, who don't necessarily wear low heels shoes like I have on, but have heels. What's that brick like?
I mean, it doesn't have large joints, so I mean, I, I don't know that it would
It's fine for heels, when it's newly set. I know there's been some
How do you know that?
John?
Speak for experience on that.
I didn't wanna go there.
That is a good point.
We're all taking it. Got me on that.
I didn't wanna go there.
I have never been to court there, by the way. I just wanna tell you that.
Next time you go, I want you to wear your heels.
No, no, but it's a very, very smooth surface, and the joints are very tight, and so I think it's fine, except that you do, you have to understand that over 25 years, you will get some moving of the brick a little bit. It's actually in pretty good shape.
The good thing about, and, and to, to John's point, is that in the wintertime, paver surfaces will rise and go down, and rise and go down, where concrete will break up.
Okay.
So it, it, it is, it's not everlasting, but it lasts, I think, a lot longer, and the heavy salt uses that they'd have to use on the concrete would probably make it look kinda like the front steps do now.
No, the steps were just purely concrete, right? It wasn't purely concrete.
Yes, right.
That's correct.
And they don't look very good.
And they don't look good. The steps are in really bad shape, and so is the curbing, right?
It's been awful for like years.
Yeah, so we're here to fix it. And that's what these, that's what our, our department heads have been working on and
And what you can do that, you know, we, we can play around with, is there's sort of two levels. There's the courthouse and the PD are two different levels. So you end up with a wall that begins on the uphill side and sort of transitions in. That could get wider, you know, to make it a bit, you know, we're showing it now as a planter, you know.
This one right here? Which one?
This here.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I see, the second tier.
So there, so there's two sets of stairs in there. I mean, we didn't get into the landscaping yet on the, the backside there. There are some areas beyond the, you know, beyond the, the entrance to the police station. So where the pavers are now, that could be pulled back a little bit, and some landscaping. There, there used to be, well, the stairs are still there, but I believe there's a gate now that restricts, yes.
Yes.
It's in the back way.
That's in the back.
The girl's in the court.
Right, going down for the records.
Right, that's in the back.
So if, if that's gonna remain locked, then there's little reason to extend the patio much beyond the entrance.
Well, I do believe that the chief did wanna keep that access point available.
Well, it could also be just a pathway too.
Right.
It doesn't have to be a complete, you know, the, it doesn't have to be the complete width of what's depicted on that plan.
Other questions from the board?
No.
Thoughts? Other than it's due time?
Get it done.
Yeah.
Way beyond time.
Next steps? Next steps, gentlemen?
Well, we have to refine this. Obviously, we need to speak with the people that use this the most, which is the police chief and the, the judges, to make, and we'll make that final selection. And then we have to move to get these into a form that is a biddable document for contractors.
Okay. Mr. Rodriguez, Friday? It's a joke. All right, great job. We're happy to see this moving forward. It's exciting.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Dan, you wanna take this with you?
You guys want it?
Sure.
We'll keep it up here.
Okay.
We'll keep it safe.
We can make more.
Okay. Next, we're gonna
John, don't go far.
John? Okay, we're gonna begin our public hearing portion of the evening. I appreciate everyone's patience. Okay, we'll begin by reconvening the public hearing to consider the application filed by Ready Imaging Inc. for an amended special use permit for a gasoline station located at 1917 Commerce Street. The town clerk is holding up the notice. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Maura. Appreciate it. And I
Oh, Al Whiting.
We have Al Whiting here in person?
I'm here.
Excellent. Al, please take the podium.
Okay, thank you.
If you want to, I know that you, you came to us quite a while ago, so if you wouldn't mind just refreshing everyone's memories, the board and the publics, about what we're discussing here, that'd be fantastic.
My name is Al Whiting. My company is Ready Imaging. We're the contractor who would be installing this sign at 1917 Commerce Street. This was a BP gas station. The dealer's contract with BP ended, and they're changing brands to Extra Fuels. On the left, you'll see the, it's still there, the existing BP sign, although we've covered the BP with a vinyl bag sign because contractual issues with BP. On the right is the proposed new sign. John Tegater and I have had several conversations about the design of the sign, and we've sort of agreed on this. It's 11 feet high. The existing is 20, so it's quite a bit shorter. It's under 32 square feet, which is what the town allows for signage there. There's three feet of clearance underneath to allow some line of sight when, when people are pulling out of the gas station. We put a little cornice molding at the top to give it a little architectural element, so it's not just two steel poles. And it's in my warehouse.
And you're ready to put it up?
So I'm ready.
Okay.
How many bolts you need to change it?
Pardon me?
Six bolts. There are two poles only, right? You can do tonight, right?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
I think when we last ended, you were gonna have that conversation with John Tegater.
That's, I think, what we were waiting for.
That's what we were waiting for.
Yes, and we've had it, yes.
Great.
I know, I know the last time, I also asked if some consideration could be taken to cleaning up that, if you're looking at the station, that back left-hand corner.
The garage.
Well, no, the left-hand corner where there are two, there are two, like, clothing dispensary boxes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I haven't really seen any happen there.
Yeah, they told me that they were Yeah, they told me that they were going to, you know, do some cleanup there, that was back in December, it's quite a while now. I haven't been there for, since then, we're going to take all of the signs off the building, if there are any there, when we put this up. And I'll, you know, speak to them again about some property maintenance.
Now, you're affiliated with Extramart, that's the?
Well, I'm the contractor for this site.
Contractor for the sign and so forth, okay, so he really has nothing to do with that?
No, no, I know, but, but we asked him to relay it on to the owner.
We did ask. Correct.
If the owner doesn't do it, then we can send the.
Well, I think we need to send them anyway.
We'll send the building inspector and code enforcer.
I think we need to send them anyway, at this point.
Well, I think at this point, they've, correct me if I'm wrong, and, and we do have Mr. Strauss here, who could probably provide greater detail, but I believe that they, we, we've solved the issue of the parking on, on Commerce Street there.
Number one.
So that's been rectified, number two, they, they dealt with the issue of removing some of the excess signage on the bill, on the garage itself.
They did that, yeah.
And so that's been resolved. And we have not, to my recollection, Mr. Strauss, forgive me if you have, but we have, I don't believe we've had any complaints regarding that corner that you described as of late, so.
I just, I was just looking at it on Sunday, I think.
Yeah.
Driving by.
And it was still in poor condition?
Yeah, and I think, you know, may, there was nothing parked in front of it, which might be why, because it was Sunday.
Right.
And, yeah, it was just horrible.
So, if that's something, Mr. Whiting, if you can just let the property owner know, and we'll also make sure that a building inspector and the code enforcer are aware of, that would be much appreciated.
I'll tell them to clean it up before we go put the sign up, so.
That'd be great.
Maybe because they are changing through, over to different contract with another provider, other than BP to Extramart, Extramart might even come in and say.
Yeah, they might just tell them they have to do it themselves, anyway.
Was it the same owner, or did he sell?
Pardon me?
Is it the same owner?
Yes.
Mr. Tegger, anything you want to add?
I would just add, as a reminder, that we did talk about the other sign, signage scheme on the building.
Right.
I believe in your draft resolution, there's a condition that that be brought forth to you in short order. And you wanted to get them going on this monument sign, so.
Well, yeah, we wanted to get, we wanted to give them the ability to get the monument sign moving, since it is in Mr. Whiting's warehouse.
Right.
Correct.
Any other questions from the board?
Seems to check all the boxes, and as far as code and so forth, and.
And what we, what we asked him to do, so thank you for that.
And what we asked him to do, so thank you, you know, that's, that, that, that makes us, makes it easy for us.
Yeah. We do have a resolution approving an amended special use permit for sign change to convert from BP gasoline to extra fuels. This is again, specifically for the sign, does the board want to move this, or do you want to wait, bring it on next week?
I want to close the public hearing, and then we want to move this.
Yeah, we can move this.
I'm just making sure we're on the same page here, so we'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Oh, I'm, oh, my apologies.
Ooh, it's right here, it's a public hearing.
My apologies, Mr. Koppstein.
Jeez.
We're just trying to get things done.
He gets very upset.
Matt was testing me.
Yeah, we just tested you.
My apologies, Mr. Koppstein. Uh, do you need to make a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Motion to reopen.
Give a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody else have any comments from the public, Mr. Koppstein?
At the last time this came up, with the Zoom meeting, the same issues were raised, the councilman mentioned, are those clothing bins permitted? The board was supposed to find out? Are there violations on the property?
I don't believe they are permitted.
Do the signs that are up there, do they go before a Baca, or are they approved?
He's taking them down.
That's part of the condition within the resolution.
The question is, why are we even entertaining a permit when there may be violations on the property that the property owner has not, over six months, seven months, addressed? I was there today, you were there Sunday, there's garbage back there on the left-hand sign, those bins are still back there. I think the public hearing, if you want to close, to close it, do not move on any resolution until the property owner corrects what are apparent violations, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koppstein.
Thank you very much.
He has a point there.
He does have a very good point there, his, uh.
Can I make a comment on that?
Uh, yes, Mr. Whiting.
During the Zoom meeting, I heard those comments, and I called the zoning officer and the building department, and they had no record of any violations, zoning violations, at that time. So, we didn't know what to do, and what, what to correct, when there were no outstanding violations at the time.
Right.
Whether there are any now, I don't know, but not, not then.
You see, now, that should have, at that point, should, with Mr. Whiting calling at that point, it should have clicked the, clicked the switch, that our code enforcement guy would have went out there and looked at it, and if there was any violations, he would have taken care of them at that point in time.
You know, the, the, the code is very specific with regard to those two bins that are out there, they're illegal. The only kind of bins we can have out there are the bins that we have in our park. I think, but the law may say you have to go to the town and get a, a.
Well, you could, you could get it permitted for, to have those.
We know there's no, uh, we've never issued a permit.
No, not for those.
But, you're right, I think the building department should have gone out there.
So, what, thank Mr. Whiting, well, is there any other comments for the public comment, for the public hearing? Excuse me, Mr. Whiting? Thank you.
And Strauss?
Mr. Strauss?
I just wanted to know where the sign, the new sign is in relation to the old sign.
It would replace the old sign?
Yes.
It would be right there in that same spot.
Mr. Whiting, is that correct?
Okay, fine.
Right in the same spot? Thank you, Mr. Strauss. Any other comments for the public hearing? Any other comments? Then being none?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. I think Mr. Koppstein brought up some really good points.
I don't disagree.
Me neither.
It's ugly there.
I don't, I don't, just, I'm sorry, Alice, I don't see why this can't, why we can't move this forward at this point in time, let Mr. Whiting and his group go ahead and start doing what they want there, and have our code enforcement go over there tomorrow.
Right.
And.
I agree with you, Tom.
Issue, yeah, you know, issue the proper summonses, or, or, or notices of violation to have it corrected.
I agree with you.
Because if they haven't been told, they don't know.
So as a condition, do you want to make that as a condition of the resolution?
Yes. But I don't see any reason that, you know, they can't get started at this point.
Adam, was that, are we able to make that a condition of the resolution? I don't think so.
No, no, I wouldn't do that.
Yeah, I think it's.
How about we, we, we slow sign the resolution? And when that work gets done, then we'll sign it, for real.
Can we vote on it and sign it when the work is completed?
I think we're gonna.
Mr. Tegger?
I think the validity of, he, Mr. Whiting has done.
Right.
Everything we've asked him to.
Right, he has.
Um, I think that to hold him over.
Well, it's the owner, it's the ownership, it's not really Mr. Whiting. But, but the owner is, is the one pushing forward, and, and who's hired Mr. Whiting.
Tegger?
This is actually an amended special permit for the gas station.
Right.
Part and parcel, you have signs included, so I believe, or I'm suggesting, that you can require that those things that you believe do not have a permit be removed as part of this special permit, unless they obtain the proper permits, so that is not requiring a violation, or, or the code enforcer, enforcement officer do an inspection, it's actually requiring that things that do not have a permit are removed, unless they gain that permit within a certain number of days or months, or however you want to do it, as a suggestion, I don't know if that.
No, I think, I think the conditions that are in the resolution before you are fine, but my concern was adding a condition that required the code enforcement officer to go out and issue violations, that was my issue.
Okay.
Oh, well, we, we want them to inspect and get it corrected, that's, you know.
And/or issue a violation.
Or, right, and if it's not corrected.
Yeah, look at that as our issue.
Yeah.
A code enforcement officer could go tomorrow of his own free will, right, whether you adopt this or not, it's sort of a given, if there's violations, he can issue violations.
Yeah, he can issue a notice of violations, and they have to be corrected within whatever timeframe that he has on that notice of violation, correct?
Yeah, or, or in theory, he could just issue violations and issue fines.
Yeah, no, well, I'm gonna have John go out tomorrow. John's gonna have to go out tomorrow and, and send the entire town board a report as to his observations, listing any and all violations, so this way we know for sure, and we have it documented, and we can put it to bed.
Mr. Whiting, what's your timeframe on, uh?
Well, along those lines, we applied for a building permit, and the building department won't issue it until this matter is resolved and.
Okay.
Resolution is approved. So, so.
So we probably got a two-week window here at this point.
Yeah, and then we have to pour footings, to put in the new poles, and so on and so forth, so, you know.
So no matter how you look at it, we probably have a, a week or two window here before they will actually start work, so, I, I, I.
If they have, if they have any, if the building inspector goes out tomorrow and finds violations, then he may not provide the building permit, even if we approve tonight.
Correct.
Well, and that's on him.
That's on him, right?
That's on him.
That's right. We can approve it, if he wants to issue the permits.
But if he wants to issue the permit, especially if there's violations.
Right.
Right.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, and then.
And we're gonna ask him to go out there tomorrow, anyway.
Are you comfortable with that? Yeah, I mean, I think what's gonna happen is.
Just from a RADA standpoint, that makes, that seems to make sense to me.
Look, I think ultimately, if the, if the code enforcement officer goes out there, and he sees violations, he's gonna issue violations, right? Um, and if they're not cured, whether you pass the resolution or not, the violation's gonna continue to mount, and then ultimately, the town will own the property, because they'll keep going up, right?
And Mr. Whiting can't get his, his permit anyway.
You know, I think, I think we're, these are problems that are surmountable, it's not like they're insurmountable.
And, and they, and, and the odds are, they'll, they'll rectify the situation.
There's a strong incentive, there are many incentives for them to take care of this as soon as possible.
Yeah, so you may want to lay that on them.
Violations that are found there tomorrow, or this week, how will we get notified what they are, so that we can correct them?
We'll share, we'll share the report from the building department.
They issue to, they issue anyway.
We're gonna issue to, we're gonna issue to the property owner, but, but Mr. Whiting may not be, he's not the property owner, he's not gonna see that.
He's not in the, he's not in the loop.
Yeah, but he won't get a building permit, probably.
Yeah, right, you probably wouldn't get, you're not gonna get the building permit.
He owns a nice sign right now.
Yes.
Tommy might like that in front of his house.
I think it makes sense to move it.
Motion.
All right, so we have, we have a motion.
Second.
Uh, and I can read the, it was not on the agenda. I'm just gonna read the bottom part where it states, be it now resolved with the application of ReadyImage Inc. for the approval of an amended special use permit to allow the conversion of a site signage from BP gasoline to extra fuels, as shown on the site plan, and freestanding sign drawing listed herein be approved, subject to the modifications and conditions that are listed, and that the town supervisor bein hereby is authorized to endorse this board's approval of said plan, and be further resolved, this approval is contingent on approval being obtained from the town board for signage located on the building within 90 days of the date of this approval.
You can extend that.
Excuse me?
You can extend or contract that time.
Right. So, we have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Whiting, you can let the property owner know that he'll be visited by the building inspector first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so move on to our next public hearing, which we'll make sure we have proper public comment on.
Yeah.
We will reconvene the public hearing to consider amending the code of the town of Yorktown by adding chapter 301 to opt-out of allowing cannabis retail dispensaries and onsite consumption, consumption sites. We had our first hearing last week. As a reminder to the public, who may be watching for the first time tonight, this is not a debate or a decision on the legalization of recreational marijuana for people over 21 years old. That debate was had by the state legislature, the state legislature approved recreational use of cannabis for individuals over the age of 21. The question before the town, and every municipality in the state of New York, is whether or not to allow cannabis retail dispensaries and onsite consumption sites. There's an opt-in or an opt-out decision. Opting in obviously means allowing for these sites to operate within the town limits. If you opt in, you're not able to opt out at a later point in time, if you opt out, the municipality decides to opt out now, they are able to opt back in at a later point in time, and it also triggers a permissive referendum, of which citizens of the town can circulate the required petitions to get their prerequisite number of signatures, and it can be forced onto the ballot.
Just to take it one step further, if I may, supervisor, this does not include medical marijuana.
Thank you, Councilman, right, this is also, yeah, this is, does not apply to medical marijuana. Which part?
Which part?
Permissive referendum, if the town opts out, citizens of the town are able to circulate, it's, it's, it's subject to a permissive referendum, meaning individuals of the town are able to circulate a petition in order to require, and they have to obtain a certain number of signatures, and that forces a, a referendum on the ballot in November, which is why we're trying to stick to a very strict timeline to allow for that process to unfold, if that's the decision the board makes. Any comments or questions from the town board before we reconvene open to the public?
I think we made our comments last week, but let's hear what the public has to say.
Councilman, you ready to rock and roll?
This is town board comment, no, right?
Well, if I'm, well, if you had a comment that you wanted to make before public comment.
Let me just say something, you know, whether we opt down or opt in is a town board decision. You can get the prescriptions from the doctor, or you can go the next door, next town, and get it. It's just like your 25 cent coupon, you know, people drive all the way to the faraway store or town, so, real issue is whether you want to have it in a town or not. And is it good or not? That's a big question we are going to discuss ourselves, and we're voting for it.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to open for public comment, I believe the town clerk and her staff have a list of individuals who have signed up, they will call the individuals up to the podium. I do ask, once again, we, I thought did a very good job last week showing each other a very high level of respect. I understand that people may not agree with each other on this issue, but I once again request, I think, and also the board requests, that we maintain a high level of respect for each other's opinions, and so please do not interrupt each other, do not call out while someone's speaking, and we will begin with our first speaker, thank you very much.
First speaker is Jeff Greenberg.
Great. Welcome back, Mr. Greenberg.
Hello, how's everyone doing this evening?
Good, how are you? Good, thanks for coming back.
Yes. First off, I appreciate that the town council did not vote on this issue last week, and they gave residents an extra week to go over this topic, because it means a lot to a lot of different people. When I came to last week's meeting, I pretty much had no intention of speaking, this is actually a big fear of mine, speaking in public, and I just came here to support Matt in his endeavor to open up a business in this town, and pretty much anyone's endeavor to open up a business in this town, because of all of the empty storefronts, however, I could not sit back and allow so many wildly false and speculative comments being said about this issue. Words like heroin den and prostitution were being used out of fear and not based in reality. Okay, this is about a legalized substance in the state of New York with, okay, so, Councilman Diana, you mentioned a few things last week, and I was hoping I could go over some of them, and I just want you to know, first of all, I have nothing but respect for every single one of you, I understand that all of you love this town, much like myself, I've been here 42 years, but last week, you mentioned someone by the name of Dr. Kladny of the Phoenix House, and to paraphrase, I believe you said, he quote, called it outright from day one that marijuana is a gateway drug.
That's correct.
Okay, um, this is not the case at all, all one has to do is Google this Dr. Kladny, and you can watch his CNN interview, where they ask him directly, is marijuana a gateway drug? And he says, quote, "We do not have evidence that the use of marijuana necessarily leads to the use of harder drugs like heroin or cocaine." Furthermore, he says, quote, "In fact, there is some evidence in communities that have been using marijuana heavily over the past 20 years, that we have not seen a progression to harder drugs," end quote. He does acknowledge that there is risk with marijuana, but there is risk with everything we consume, from water to food, there is always risks in our society. Councilman Diana, I apologize. I feel like I'm gonna beat you up with a lot of things you said last-
Beat me up because I'm ready to come back.
Last week, you talked about taxes. It's one of my favorite topics. You said there is a 13% tax, 9% going to the state and 4% going to the town and county. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, you said, quote, with a $10,000 a month example, you said, quote, "What does it yield us as a 4% split? $200, not enough for a tire on a plow truck." Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, if you look at the actual tax code that is written, that is on the New York State website, it says 4% going to the state. I'm sorry, 4% going to the town and going to the county. However, with that 4%, you gave it a 50-50 split. The website says it is a 75% to 25% split between the town and the county. So in the scenario that you gave us, it's $300 versus $200.
They'd buy a better tire.
They can buy a better tire. Okay. I just, again, this is just about being open and honest and with factual data.
This is the state website, sir.
Correct.
Okay.
It does say 75, 25, correct?
Yes, but it didn't say whether the state would, or the county would get 75 or the town.
No, no, it does.
It does say it in there?
It's not as clear as it could be.
Alright, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna interrupt your testimony. I'm writing things down because I'm ready.
It's okay, again, I'm talking about the things you said and I mean nothing but respect. I just, okay. So anyway, New York State is estimating this to be a billion-dollar industry, people. It is supposed to generate hundreds of millions of dollars in taxes for the state. To suggest that a company is going to make $10,000 a month, roughly $120,000 a year, is an inaccurate statement. Cash flow analysis that I've seen is projecting between $1 and $3 million of cash flow for a business of this magnitude. If a company makes $120,000 a year with expenses as insurance, security, payroll taxes, payroll, rent, you are not going to make a profit. If you're making gross receipts between $1 and $3 million, we'll take $2 million as an example, that is a tax roughly of $60,000, $40,000 if you use the councilman's percentage, but we'll say $60,000 of extra tax revenue. More than enough money to buy not only one tire, but four tires and most likely an automobile to go with it. But again, this issue isn't about taxes. It's actually, what I'm bringing up is more about transparency, about using actual tax rates that is in the law. Secondly, again, Councilman Diana brought up an individual or a scenario last week with regards to someone who was drinking a bunch of White Claws and got a little too intoxicated. He smoked a joint and it was a fatal accident and that is, it's heartbreaking. You don't want to hear about it, which is why we preach, "Don't drink and drive." I grew up here in the 90s in Yorktown. I'm sure... I don't know, some people grew up in the 90s as a teenager in Yorktown. I don't know, he's a baby case, I don't know. As you're well aware, there was a really big issue with drinking and driving in Yorktown in the 90s.
Yeah.
Very big. A good friend of mine had to say goodbye to her brother who passed away because of this incident. At no point did this council or anyone suggest closing all the bars, stopped selling alcohol. That was never brought up. Instead, I believe education was the way we went about it. Councilman Diana threw out a bunch of letters last week, ask, dare, sad, mad, a whole bunch of them. But all of them teach responsibility. That is the route that we went. We went with our parents educating the young, our teachers teaching the children, police officers coming into our schools to educate everyone about drinking and driving and not to do it. Marijuana in this state is a legalized controlled substance. Alcohol is a legalized controlled substance. Why would you ban one and not the other if your fear is smoking while driving and drinking while driving? Because we know drinking while driving is bad. Councilman Diana, you were a former police officer. I believe you know drinking and driving is not favorable. I don't think I'm beating you up on this one, Councilman Diana.
Oh, I get a break here.
Yeah, you get a break for this.
Alright, go ahead.
Okay.
Give it to somebody else.
Last week, one of the councilmen mentioned the black market and marijuana being laced with fentanyl. I believe it was Councilman, okay.
That was me.
Yeah, that was you. Okay. I feel like that argument goes to support why we needed a dispensary in this town, so that the black market isn't there. In all the research I have done, I could not find one instance, not one instance of medical-grade marijuana ever being laced with anything. Medical-grade marijuana has always been straight-up THC or CBD. You can't even get the green plant. You can get it in extract or in a vape form or in a pill, but you literally cannot get the plant. There's never been one instance of a medical marijuana distributor selling illegal products. Furthermore, fentanyl, as you are well aware, can be put in cigarettes as well, besides marijuana. But there has been no talk of banning cigarettes from being sold at gas stations or supermarkets. If I go to a bar and I order a vodka tonic, okay, and I get my drink and I walk off to the side and I put my drink down and because, you know, I'm this and someone wants to slip something into my drink and maybe take advantage of me. You know, and-
I can't imagine somebody doing that, can you?
Can't imagine someone doing that, but you know, it's, you know, come on. Anyway, what I'm saying is that, do you blame the vodka, the company that made the vodka? No. Do you blame the bar that sold me, that gave me the drink? No. The only person to blame is the individual that slipped something into my drink. Do we close down the bars because I was roofied and I was hurt? No, that's ridiculous and illogical. Councilman Diana, right back to you, buddy.
Oh, back to me. I don't think, at least two?
No, 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 no. I'll come back to Ed later.
Alright, good.
I'm gonna go back to you now. You were talking about specific individuals, I believe with CDL licenses and how they can have THC in their system and things of that nature or CBD ointments. Okay, if you have a business that requires you to have this license and you can't have marijuana in your system, don't smoke marijuana. It's that simple. Okay? I'm assuming, I'm not positive on this, but with a CDL license, you also can't drive around drunk. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Not with any license.
Yeah, so don't drink and drive, people. It's literally that simple. Okay? Now, I believe, this one isn't on you either. A councilman, don't remember who it was, mentioned last week that he had a fear of smoking in public spaces. So people, I hope you understand that where you can smoke a cigarette, in theory, you can smoke marijuana. I believe the councilman said, "Walking through a park and someone is toking out." It was one of my favorite quotes from last week's meeting. But I would like everyone to understand that this is an issue that I'm concerned with. I do not want to go to the parks with my family and I do not want to smell people smoking marijuana. Furthermore, I do not want to smell people smoking cigarettes, okay? So I did what I should do, which is to call the Yorktown Parks Department and ask them about smoking in the parks. Because whether there's a dispenser or not, it is legal to smoke wherever you can smoke a cigarette, you can smoke a joint. So, Mr. Slater's shaking his head. I think he knows what I'm about to say, which is, it is illegal to smoke cigarettes or marijuana in Yorktown parks. Okay?
In all fairness, I might have said parks too, but my concern is, say you're going over to the Triangle Shopping Center, go over to Acme, and you're coming from around the back, you are now walking through a nursery school parking lot. And Bright Beginnings, I think, is back there. So that's more the concern, not so much the parks. We understand and we spoke about the fact that that smoking will be updated and the-
Okay, because you did mention, you did mention the parks last week. And again, whether there's a dispenser in this town or not, it's not gonna change the actual law, which is written, which states if you can smoke a cigarette, you can smoke marijuana. Now again, as you said, Acme Center is a privately-owned business and if they have no smoking signs, then obviously you can't smoke there. So, again, I just came up here because I believe that any business that wants to come to Yorktown should be able to come to Yorktown. I mean, you guys know this, the Roma Plaza has four empty lots, Acme has four empty lots, the Caldo Shopping Center. Maybe three, maybe four empty lots, I don't know. They're doing construction over at the old Food Emporium, so if you... But it means empty lot left and right. If someone wants to bring a business to this town, please let them bring a business to this town. Every other community has opted out except for up in Kingston, I believe we said, Hudson, I believe we said, New Paltz have opted in. This would be the only business in Westchester that is selling this legal industry. It will be the only one. People will come to this town. People will come to this town for Trader Joe's too, which I'm excited for. Let's be real. I mean, that side of town needs a supermarket, but let's give more than one reason for people to come to this town.
Okay, Lowe's.
Lowe's, come on. Come on. We want Trader Joe's and some of us want this dispensary. The fact of the matter is, it's a legal business in the state. It should be allowed to operate in the state. I know everyone up here loves this town. My wife calls me a lifer and she makes fun of me. I've been here 42 years. I just wanted to say thank you for all that you do and I apologize to Councilman Diana if I beat up on the things that you said.
You got a lot worse than me on a different basis.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, and by the way, Jeff, you better get a career in public speaking because you're doing very well.
Thank you.
Did well.
Next is Kimberly Brennan.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, how are you?
Good. I have a petition of sorts. It's actually people that couldn't come to the meeting. They don't drive or they're unable to to opt out for this, so I'm gonna hand this over to Donna.
Sure, yeah, please give it to the town clerk.
Thank you.
I also just want to go off of what we said before. You've seen me up here talking about opting out of this and I do still feel strongly that we need to. Yorktown is an amazing town. And as this gentleman said, we have our issues too. We have people that drink and drive. And he says, "Then stop." Well, they still do. It's there. We can't stop them all. So why are we going to add something to this? Before, when I was talking, I always had assumed they were talking about opening this dispensary right in town, which we are surrounded by parks. Obviously, the whole town is surrounded by one, technically. Then I see 202. A heavy populated road that not for anything. I don't want to think of anybody impaired driving down. Now, they also compare it to a bar, go in and have a drink. I can go to a bar and have a drink, have one drink and leave and not be impaired. Where if I go in and, I don't know where you got the toking thing from, but that's funny. If I toke up and I'm stoned, I can't drive. But some people are not gonna say, "Okay, we're not gonna do that right now." They're going. They're gonna get in their car, they're gonna be impaired and they're gonna injure somebody. And like everybody else, I don't want to smell it. You want to smoke it in your home, that's great, whatever, it's legal, go for it. I really don't have anything against it in that way. But I do in public. I know it's, you know, they're legalizing or whatever, but I don't need our kids smelling it. I don't think, like, Ed brought up, we shouldn't have to be able to walk around Acme and that's what we're gonna smell as we go into a food store. It's just, you know, and they're gonna bring it in, but do we have to make it that easy to just be here? And I honestly don't feel that the taxes justify the means. You're talking one here. We're not, I know it's a billion-dollar industry, but this is one little town with a dispensary. So what if they make $3 million? Okay, $3 million and you're 3% or 4%, you're talking $90,000 by the time it's cut. Is that correct? Is that math correct? That's not enough. It's not enough for the police officers. It's not enough for, you know, just extra patrols, anything. It doesn't seem to be fair to us. So I am still asking you all to please opt out of this, at least for now. Let's review it. Let's see what happens elsewhere. I saw Colorado. I saw what happened to those areas that put dispensaries in. They're not pretty anymore. Beautiful areas are not looking as stunning as they did. And God knows, Yorktown right now, we need to go in that direction. We need to be the stunning town we used to be. And I just don't think this is the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Next is Rosemary Panio.
Panio, good evening.
Hey.
Congratulations again on Italy's win.
Italy number one. For Italy, that's right. I hope that by the end of the evening, I will be able to thank this town board for a unanimous no vote. I hope that will be the case. And in the event it should go to permissive referendum, I hope that we're ready to get the vote out so that we could finalize the no to legalizing this thing and these dispensaries in our town. Other towns are opting out. Somers, we mentioned Somers, Mount Kisco, North Castle or Newcastle, a bunch of other towns. There was a reason for that. And if we want to go back and look at their video of their town board meetings, then we can follow their discussions as well. This is not a partisan issue.
No.
This is not a partisan issue. I hope you'll do the right thing and you'll vote no. Let's demonstrate to Yorktown that we can be united on this and many other things, which are just plain wrong. Everything is not about money. People have spent tens of thousands of dollars, $100,000 to get their children or grandchildren in rehabilitation after this. So, please, for the sake of this community, vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose.
Thank you.
Next is Justin, I'm sorry, Jeffrey Veach.
Mr. Veach?
It's been a long time. How are you?
How are you? We haven't seen you in a while. I'm a council and Mr. Supervisor. Happy to be here. Yeah, I don't want to litigate anything. There's a lot of discussion that can go on and you have, you know, thousands of points you can make, one way or the other. But I approach it from a very personal standpoint. First of all, my feeling about this is, why not opt out? I mean, what's the rush? We're not about money. The town, most people came to this town because they were trying to improve the life for their families. They wanted a great education. They want to, they don't want exposure to things that you have in other places. So Yorktown is special for the folks that move here, especially with young kids. And it was very important to us. Now, I have a very personal story about this because I lost my 17-year-old son in 2008 to an accidental drug overdose. And he died snorting heroin, of all things, the most devastating thing. And this is a time we never heard of such a thing, especially in the suburbs. So, it changed our lives to the point where I had to figure out what in the world happened because I felt like I was obligated to share my son's story and to talk to other kids. And I've done so. I have spoken to literally thousands of kids in New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, as far west as Grand Rapids, Michigan, as far south as Atlanta to talk about his story. Now, he died snorting heroin. But when he was 14 years old, it began with marijuana. Now, I'm not gonna say that marijuana is a gateway to harder drugs because it isn't for all, but it is for some. It was for my son. We tried to figure out what in the world happened to him, what brought him from marijuana at age 14, when everybody says, "Well, everybody's doing it." Even his counselor said, "Don't get too concerned because the kids are doing it." And we had counseling, we did all kinds of things for our son. And the marijuana kind of went away, but, you know, it was the kids' thing, they were doing it. But we didn't know what happened later. We didn't realize that he had so many anxieties that he began to self-medicate. And the marijuana had lowered his inhibitions to try other things, against trying other things. So he began to experiment with painkillers. We didn't know this at the time, before he died. We learned this later because I had to piece together his life so I could present it to people. And I wanted to present a case that we need to watch out for our children, that no family, you know, can feel immune from the perils of substance abuse. There's just no guarantee whatsoever. So for our son, you know, the marijuana became a gateway and it doesn't happen for everybody. So I wouldn't claim that it's a gateway and, but the point is, it's another, it's the introduction of another substance in our community which can cause problems for our young people. And again, what's the point of rushing through this? Let's wait it out. Let's see what happens. Now, I could argue the points if I were an attorney and I could tell you about Colorado, I could tell you about other states where the marijuana experiment hasn't worked out so well. In fact, they're rewriting the law in Colorado- In fact, they're rewriting the law in, in, in Colorado right now because they discovered that, that their plans weren't working out. The marijuana wasn't giving back to the community. It wasn't making the lives of people better. It was causing more of a social problem than they had anticipated. And the income is not as large as, as the negative situation that's, that is created. But we can argue that day in, day out. But I just, I just want to point out from my point of view that we can't take, take a chance on our, on our young people. And I've spent, I spent the past four, well, not the past year and a half, I couldn't speak. But speaking to kids, I've learned so much about them. And they, they have, they have an amazing perspective, you know, on, on this situation. And for me to tell the story and to talk to these kids, they really understand, you know, this situation. I, I had the opportunity to speak to eighth graders, uh, a number of times in New Jersey. And you would think, you know, eighth graders, they're thirteen, you know, they're on the cusp and maybe they won't be facing anything like this. But lo and behold, you know, at one school I went to, the, the teachers had, we had a whole bunch of speakers that day, maybe forty speakers, telling their story about something that happened to them, how, how they dealt with adversity. And, and the teachers asked them to write letters to their favorite speaker. And lo and behold, I get a dozen letters from these kids, these eighth graders, talking about my talk. And I just want to share a couple of them with you. Quote, I don't want to forget the quotes. But they kind of brought light of the fact that I mentioned in my talk, uh, they, they brought this to light, that about twenty percent of our young people are always experimenting with substances. And, but you don't, you don't sometimes realize how young they really are. These are eighth graders. And, uh, I, I got these notes, like Kylie wrote, "I know a friend who's on drugs and you made me have the courage to stand up to this friend." I'm just telling Justin's story. Giovanna wrote, "I have a friend that I have seen high numerous times." We're talking about the eighth grade. "It has really started to worry me and I always felt that I should say something. Thanks to you, I think I am." So the whole, the letters were all similar. As for me, the thought, you know, that my talk, a message from Justin, would bring about this response from young people gives me the resolve to never stop talking. That's why I'm here today. I believe we have to, we have to take care of our kids. That's a priority. It's not about money. It's not about allowing businesses or disallowing businesses. Let's see how it works out. We have the time. It's, it's, it's good the state of New York and its legislation, uh, gave us that, you know, ability in the, on the local level to opt out and say, let's see how this works out. We have some control. I think we need to exercise that control. And I could criticize the state legis-, the state legislation. There's a whole bunch of things I wish would change, but we're not here to talk about that. It's the law, it's the law in New York. And so I just urge you to, to think about that and we should opt out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Veach.
Really appreciate your words.
Thank you.
Next is Dominique. Mike?
Hi, Dominique.
Hey.
Thanks for joining us.
Hello, Dominique.
Thanks for having me. Hi, everyone. Um, so this is my first time speaking at a council meeting. I actually wasn't.
Good.
Thank you.
We hope you come back.
Good, thanks. I wasn't planning on actually speaking, but some of my fellow residents encouraged me to do so. So here I am. Uh, I am a graduate of Yorktown High. I moved back here about a year and a half ago, two years. I've lived in large cities with dispensaries. I've lived in small towns like this and worked in small towns like this with dispensaries, where my friends raise their families. And I was watching the last meeting and I was really surprised to hear a number of the comments that came from the council. And respectfully, I want to share and reflect back a little bit of what I heard. So, listening closely to the arguments, I found some of the points to be really strongly based in hypotheticals, some to be really leaning into correlation as opposed to causation, and some not directly linked to fact. And I'll share a couple of those things. And admittedly, that was disappointing to me. Uh, the first, which the first speaker spoke about, that marijuana is a gateway drug. The CDC, um, notes that the majority of people who use marijuana never progressed to harder substances. There are no verified studies that actually point to marijuana being a gateway drug. And that is incredibly important to note. Second, I heard from a number of people that the weed is stronger these days or some sort of formulation of that concept. And to some extent, that's true. Uh, when you look at illegally seized cannabis over the last thirty years, the THC content has raised, has increased, but by less than ten percent. And that is seized on unregulated illegally grown and distributed marijuana. When it comes to legalized cannabis, you actually find a greater variety of low potency products that are labeled as well as, um, regulated for what they have and what they contain. Uh, there was also, as mentioned earlier, an allocation to, uh, a ten thousand dollar revenue from a business, which I also want to reiterate is wildly low. If we look at dispensaries in rural areas, so not towns like ours, but actually rural areas, three million dollars seems to be a number that is rolled around for those dispensaries and the intake that they have. If you look at the dispensary industry more widely and zoom out a little bit, the very low end typically make between a hundred thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand. About fifteen percent make between five hundred thousand and a million. An upward of twenty-five percent make over a million dollars a year. So I just want to throw that out there as we're talking about money. The comparison to alcohol is generally confusing to me as an argument for or against dispensaries. Alcohol is far, far more addictive than marijuana. And if we're looking at legalized substances, nicotine is far more addictive than alcohol. Um, both of those are sold within our town. Both of those we have efforts to, uh, shield, shield our children from. And yet, this substance is, seems to be more contentious. I was also struck by the comments of the last speaker, um, and the implications for our children. I think the argument against a dispensary, uh, as a negative impact on our children is actually the inverse. If things are more regulated, if they are harder to get than they are to get now, fewer children will have access to them. Our children already have access to marijuana. They already have, they're already using it, they're already sharing it, they're already talking about it. It seems counterintuitive to me to have the argument actually go in the other direction. So, all of that said, a couple of facts about dispensaries. Uh, one, towns with dispensaries tend to see a reduction in violent crime. They tend to see a reduction in illegal drug sales. They produce and provide safe products that are regulated and dosed appropriately. They also provide safe places to commune and to use those products. And the financial benefits are both indirect as well as direct. And for thinking about a dispensary as a place to consume as well as a place to buy marijuana, just as bars are considered a social place for adults, so can be dispensaries. On a personal note, as a woman, I've been in many dispensaries and to many bars. And I have never felt unsafe in a dispensary. Many times I've felt unsafe in a bar. So I'm going to encourage you not to opt out, to really consider this, to think about and think through all of the arguments that people are making for and against in a very calibrated manner. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Trishy Kushner.
Hi, Trishy.
Hi, Trishy.
Hi, Trish.
Thank you so much, Trishy Kushner. I, um, live at nineteen eighty-nine Hunterbrook Road and have been the, um, president and CEO of the Alliance for Safe Kids for the past fifteen years. And I just want to open this with how much I love our community, how much I love the comments that we've heard tonight and that there's, there's so many moving parts that what I'd like to do, we, we did have a board meeting last night and I just wanted to offer a gentle comment as you consider adding chapter three oh one to initially opt out of marijuana dispensaries and onsite consumption in Yorktown. And our focus obviously is, is with the youth. This is a New York State law. It is legal for adults to, to smoke marijuana. That's not up for discussion. We've seen that coming around. We're, no one is surprised that, um, you know, maybe things happened a little quicker than we anticipated and I think that's maybe, um, what's being, um, received with the, um, with the comments in the community. But the, what we, what we have decided to do, certainly as a board, is that, um, as we've been preparing for this and gathering additional, um, uh, information, our mission remains that we always include, um, provision of evidence-based research programs that allow informed decision-making. We're hearing, um, bits and pieces, some things not quite evidence-based or researched, but everything's open for discussion and that's what, that's what our, our community, we, we thrive on making informed decisions. We don't want to be told what we can and can't do. We want to make decisions for ourselves. We want to empower our adults and our youth to make informed decisions. So we, we always, we tend to always look at protective factors within our community, risk factors within our community, and perception of harm. Our, our concern in, in immediately, um, allowing, uh, dispensaries and onsite usage for adults is that, that we keep talking about the word regulation. And I love that Dominique was, was referencing different regulations that she's seen, that, that, but the, the truth in New York State right now is there are absolutely, and I have all the statements from the New York Gov. website, that the Office of Cannabis Management will need to draft and issue regulations to implement the law in order for adult-use sales to begin. However, while there are currently no stores open to purchase adult-use cannabis, the possession of use of cannabis for adults twenty-one years of age and older in accordance with the, uh, MRTA is now legal. That's, we're not, we're not, we're not discussing that tonight. It is legal. If you, wherever you can smoke a cigarette, if you're over twenty-one, you can smoke marijuana. But the perception of harm, that's, that's what we need to look at. If there, if there, if we, if we, i- if we're waiting on regulations, when has the town board ever approved something to come into our community that's not regulated, that's not perceived as safe? Our, our swimming pools, our parks, our streets, everywhere we go, every store you go into, you know, you're going into a store that there's some type of regulations. Our bars and liquor stores have regulation, regulations. We, there, most, I mean, I, I know that the communities that are opting out now, once there are regulations, they will probably move towards opting in, looking at, um, at providing, because you, you, if you're having, if, if, if it's already legal, then you have to, you have to address that. But why would we have this perception that to our community, if, if our youth and our, any of our citizens in our community, if they walk around and see dispensaries open right, right away, they're going to say, of course, this must be safe and regulated because there's no way that Ed and Tom and Matt and Vishnu and Alice would ever let something come into this community that wasn't regulated in at least a manner of safety. I love the stories. I love Jeff talking about, um, and Dominique as well, talking about the, the business side of this. We can't, we can't close our eyes. Do we, do we ever tell our restaurants and bars that we don't want them to be successful? That's not, it's not our, that's not what we're looking at today. But what we are focused on is informed decision-making. And we don't have enough information to opt in. And that's what, that's what we're asking for. We have, we have lots of time to talk about how to, um, gather more resources and evidence-based research and how to, um, educate and bring awareness to our communities. And guess what? A lot of that, twenty percent of the funding that's going to be sitting in New York State is allocated, of the, of the proceeds, is allocated to come back for education and awareness on substance and, and drug abuse. So we know that, of course, just like with alcohol, there will be, there will be abuse, there will be misuse and there will be addiction. And that's not okay, but it is, it, it, it's going to happen whether marijuana was legal or not. And so we have to up our game. We have to, we all want to make informed decisions. We all, just, just like, I don't mean to keep harping back, but like, there are different speakers that said, I don't, um, you know, I, I know not to do this. I, I, I know not to get behind the wheel and do this. We, we want to make informed decisions, but we also, we rely on, on our town board to make sure that, that businesses that come into our community are regulated. And we'd love to wait for, for those regulations to come down and revisit. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trishy.
Thank you, Trishy.
Next is Matt Darrow.
Welcome back, Matt.
Hello, Matt.
Hey, Matt.
See you again.
Good to see you too. My name's Matt Damrow. This is the second time I'm here in two weeks. It's good to see everybody. Um, Same here. Yeah. What can I say that has not already been said?
Say whatever you want.
I know. They took your thunder. Unlike the, they pretty much did. What the heck? Yeah. Um, so Jeff, both Jeffs had a lot to say, um, Dominique, really everybody. And, and I appreciate it. There's really not a perspective that I can share that I think I haven't already shared or they have. I did want to ask the board a question, a side note. Last, was it last week? No, two weeks ago we were here, um, and, was it two or last week? Last week. And, um, Councilman Patel, you, you mentioned molecular structures. And I wanted to specifically discuss if anybody else is up on their Delta Eight literature here.
That's where we have Vishnu.
Yes, that stuff right here.
We all pointed right down it. All right. So, so just, let me just bring everybody else up to speed and, and I'm sure you all have a perspective, Councilman. So the, the THC that we're all discussing with the psychoactive components tonight is THC, uh, Delta Nine. That's specifically what's covered in the MRTA law that is relevant to this meeting. The reason I'm asking about Delta Eight, if you've watched the news, Delta Eight is a synthetically-produced version of marijuana. And you could get it over at the gas station right now. I'm just, sure.
Keep your comments to the board.
No problem. I saw a lot of other folks turn around. I thought that was the thing to do. But I appreciate me getting the slap on the wrist. So, Delta Eight is over at the Shell, it's at the Mobile, it's at pretty much every gas station. And the way that that's available is that it's, it's synthetically extracted from the hemp plants that are leftover from the hemp production that's okayed and it circumvents the, the federal hemp law.
Okay.
Nobody's regulating that. Our youth, that everybody is so-
That's not a Schedule One.
Um, it's circumvents, but it has similar psychoactive components. And people, basically, it's referred to as weed light in the press. Okay? So it will get you high, maybe not as much as the real stuff, but it will. And your kids can go get it right now at the gas station, at a smoke shop. It's legal. It's federally legal. It's federally legal.
Matt, a few years back, there was another substance that they were selling at gas stations and then that ended up getting-
What was it called?
It was that bait stuff.
Yeah, I remember. I remember, I, I remember something similar.
Yeah, and, and actually, the government had to come in and start to, to do it because you had kids basically dying
Right.
in the streets. So, you know, eventually, look, some things slip under the rug, but I think eventually, uh, those issues come around.
Should this slip under the rug? Eventually, I mean, I appreciate eventually to a degree. Um, I'd like some action. If we're going to discuss Delta Nine, we should be discussing Delta Eight as well. And the accessibility that our kids have to it. So, we'll table that for another time. After the last discussion and everybody's made the correlations with alcohol and the comparisons, I'm sorry. And I've thought about this too. My wife works at a nursing home. She's a therapist and she deals with a lot of folks who have dementia. Pretty much, uh, God, too many folks a day she has to help and take care of. And they're typically all dementia patients, um, end stages of life. Nobody's there because they smoked too much weed. A lot of folks are there because they drank too much alcohol. It is one of the prime causes of dementia and Alzheimer's. But again, we've got all these bars and could go get a beer right now, it's fine. Hey, I like a beer too. So that was just really a reflection of mine. And I had so much other stuff to share with you guys, but both Jeffs covered a lot of it. Um, I did want to share with you because I know last week, Councilman Diana brought up his hypothetical ten thousand dollars a month calculation. Where have you talked about my ten thousand dollars? It was just a number. It was just an easy, easy number. Oh, I get it, I get it. But what that also does is it attributes a bit of mischaracterization to what this, the potentials of these businesses. So, can, if it's okay, I got- So, if it's okay, I've got some copies here, I can share with you folks. So, this is just a hypothetical of what our company, Hudson Groove, I'm sorry.
I can translate into another language.
Probably a Delta-8 language.
No, I have it right here.
Oh, okay. See, I knew it.
There you go.
I should give you one of these, you know?
Sure.
This one.
Next table. Next table you stop on the house, please.
No, 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 this one, the periodic table of fruits and vegetables. I had given him more than $10,000 of this one.
Thank you.
So, this is just a hypothetical. Can you move it in the court, please?
Yes, or you want me to hear?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Thank you.
So, for those in the audience who can't see this, it's just a very basic scenario of what a dispensary is like. We're modeling our business a lot after Massachusetts dispensaries, not the disasters that are being cited here in Colorado. By the way, I used to live in Colorado. It's not as bad as everybody's painting it out to be. I worked in the tech center, not too far away from where the mass shooting was, at the movie theater, in fact, just a few weeks away from there, if that's when I moved. Anyway, back to this. The ideal location would typically be Route 202, probably near the car dealerships with nondescript signage, nothing in the window, 5,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet, always open to other ideas. That's the general idea. The location, obviously, everybody knows, needs to be a certain distance from a house of worship, also a certain distance from any sort of school. Sales, yes, as you've heard this evening, conservative projections are for a very modest rural dispensary. $3 million in sales per year, local tax at 3%, that's $90,000. But hypothetical scenario of $10 million sales, local tax would equal $300,000. So, that's actually more on the realistic level. But it all depends on free market economy, how many other dispensaries are around, the proximity to all those as well. But to bring up Theory Wellness up in Great Barrington, they've handed over $3 million to the town in one year. They made over $20 million their first year. So, that's just some food for thought. I know nobody wants to really talk about the numbers, but the truth is, we were talking about money for the first two hours of tonight's meeting. Money's part of life. It also brings additional commerce with traffic, probably a net increase of 5,000-plus additional cars per year. The adjacent businesses would most certainly benefit, especially if the town were to get on board and also encourage extending that business elsewhere to other businesses.
Is that an admission that being near the car dealerships, there'd be a lot of accidents?
I don't get it.
Well, the adjacent businesses or the car dealerships, and they'd benefit.
No, it's just general location. No, I get the joke, thank you. And also employees, everybody keeps on forgetting about the markets and the employees. A modest dispensary is going to at least, at least employ 15 to 20 people. So, you're talking average salaries of $50,000 a year, $750,000 minimum, back into the local economy, plus, as Jeff Greenberg mentioned, the real estate, one less vacant commercial property to stare at. I want to thank everybody for listening. I truly, I think tonight was an exercise in futility, because I think a lot of minds have already been made. And we'll see you guys in 45 days.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Tony Grasso.
Hello, Mr. Grasso.
Hi, Tony.
Good evening, Mr. Grasso.
Nice to see you guys again.
Great to see you.
I don't believe I could duplicate what you've heard this evening. Short and sweet, I can't use the language that I'd like to use. First of all, those of you that have been in business know, your taxes are based on net profit, not gross profit. So, I throw those facts out for those who have never been in business. So, right off the bat, my opinion is, you should vote out of this. It's not time to get into it at this time. Down the road, another board might want to get in. Is it a gateway drug? In my opinion, it is. I've had some experience there. All of you know it. I'm not going to go through that. That was a full recovery with the person involved in business, with children, with a house and a lovely husband. It worked out great. But the cost was also great. As far as any studies have been done on being a gateway drug, I believe it is. I do believe it is. I don't have any scientific information. I have facts, living facts that went through it. I've had friends, living and not here, whose children went through it, that we owe in general to each other with children, with grandchildren and great-grandchildren. That's what we need. But that's your decision, it's not mine. The only decision you have to make is to opt out. And at the next time, there's a time to vote for people to sit on our town board, that's when we, as voters, make that. That's what I gave to this country when I served in the service. Remember, you can go along with the Constitution. That was great. They signed it, we should live by it. But who gave it to you on a daily basis? Do you know who gave it to you?
Military.
It's servicemen. The people who fought for you, the people who died for you. That's who gave it to you. I'm not here to preach that. I'm here to you to say, no, not at this time. Now, has the state come out with any guidelines?
No.
No. Then why should we get into it? We don't know what it's all about, other than the state passed the law. What law? What law did they pass? You can smoke it, you can get it. But who's going to monitor this? Is the state going to give you a chapter and verse of how to do it? I would say they don't, because they don't even have a committee on it. Who in the State Assembly or the State Senate is going to monitor this? What are the rules? Have our police department been charged with how to handle this? That's another thing to talk about. And then there are other things you have to worry about. I believe in the federal law, it's against, there's a federal law against marijuana.
It is.
Now, what jurisdiction is it going to take? Do states' rights are over the federal government? I don't think so. So, how did the police department handle this? So, there's a lot to think about this. So, again, having one sat up there, get the facts, get the facts. People come up here, they have a reason to come up here. Sometimes it's monetary. Some of the two young people that spoke this evening, I think it's a monetary thing for them. I don't know this, but the impression I got from their talk, it's a money thing. Don't let money make your judgment. You people have managed money in this town in a very good way. Unfortunately, I haven't seen the report from the auditors this last year, but if it's the same as the year before, financially, you're in good shape, as long as you watch how you spend that money. That's the key, right there. I scribbled a few things here, and I'm afraid to interpret what I wrote. I talked about that, talked about that, talked about that. So, again, I'm going to not be as long-winded as some have been up here. But again, I encourage each of you, think of your children, think of your grandchildren, and think of your great-grandchildren. This is important. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, Mr. Grasso. Thanks.
Thanks, Tony.
Next is Jay Kapsstein.
Good evening again.
Good evening, Mr. Kapsstein.
Oh, Jay. Jay, you're getting high-tech on us here.
$90,000 doesn't pay for a police officer, and $300,000 doesn't pay for a soul. There's a 41-page report here, I'm not going to read it.
Thank you.
Going to give it to Vishnu to read?
I'll forward a copy if you want it. What I am going to read is a very, very short letter written by Dr. Nora D. Valco, medical doctor. She's the director of the National Institute on Drug Abuse for the National Institutes of Health. You know my opinion, I'm not going to give my opinion again tonight. And I'm quoting now. Changes in marijuana policies across states legalizing marijuana for medical or recreational use suggest that marijuana is gaining greater acceptance in our society. Thus, it is particularly important for people to understand what is known about the adverse health effects and the potential therapeutic benefits linked to marijuana. Because marijuana impairs short-time-term memory and judgment, and it distorts perception, it can impair performance in school or at work, and make it dangerous to drive. It also affects brain systems that are still maturing through young adulthood. So, regular use by teens may have negative and long-lasting effects on their cognitive development, putting them at a competitive disadvantage and possibly interfering with their well-being in other ways. Also, contrary to popular belief, marijuana can be addictive, and its use during adolescence may make other forms of problem use or addiction more likely. Whether smoking or otherwise consuming marijuana has therapeutic benefits that outweigh its health risks is still an open question that science has not resolved. Although many states now permit dispensing marijuana for medicinal purposes, and there is mounting anecdotal evidence for the efficacy of marijuana-derived compounds, the U.S. Food and Drug Administration has not approved medical marijuana. However, safe medicines based on cannabinoid chemicals derived from the marijuana plant have been available for decades, and more are being developed. This research report is intended as a useful summary of what the most up-to-date science has to say about marijuana and its effect on those who use it at any age. This report's a year old. It has not been supplemented by NIH, though it's still in effect. So, thank you for allowing me to read it. Tom, you asked for the copy?
Yes, thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Mr. Kapsstein.
She's very, very welcome.
Next is Bruce Hutchinson.
Take your time, Mr. Hutchinson. Good evening.
How are you?
Yeah, good evening. What I want to say is, Yorktown is a great town, and I believe with all the young kids and young adults and young children growing up in Yorktown, we have many playgrounds, many playgrounds and fields in Yorktown. And I believe that marijuana, you should opt out of it because with the young children and young adults, with the playgrounds, it's not going to be safe for them with the playgrounds around and stuff here in this town. And maybe the marijuana places should be in other towns. You could put up in other towns or other cities around, but not in Yorktown. With all the playgrounds and stuff around with all the young children, it wouldn't be safe. And if it's medical marijuana, that you could have, but not the other marijuana. And also, the, and also, I don't think you'd have the funding, the town would have the funding for the police department resources to handle the marijuana resources. So, I think at this time, you'd be wise opting out of it through a later date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchinson, just as a point of information, as was said earlier, there is a no-smoking ban at all of our parks and playgrounds. I just want to make sure you know that. That includes marijuana.
Yeah, but you never know what kids are going to do.
Understood, sir. Understood?
Oh, kids, sometimes there are things they're not supposed to do.
I understand completely. I just wanted to make sure you understood the law.
Next is Brian D.
Mr. D, good evening.
Good evening, guys. Brian D. from Chur Oak.
See you again.
Hello, Brian Senior. So, I got a question. If you knew a car had no brakes, you're going to jump in it, head for the brick wall? See what happens? Or head for the cliff, see if it goes over? You don't know what this law's about. It's not finished. How can you opt into something that you don't know nothing about? You can't hop in if you don't know where it's going, all right? A lot of talk about money, a lot of talk about people's lives and stuff. Yeah, this stuff does destroy people's lives, there's no doubt about it. We all know that, all right? Alcohol destroys lives. Everything, everything in life can kill you. We know that. The problem you have to have here is you guys got to guide us. That's what we voted you in for, right? It's your choice. So, right now, you have an option here where if you opted out of this, maybe later on, when they get stuff straightened out, the town could opt back in again. But I think you've got to give yourself five, six years from when they start to see what happens. Because if you look back at Colorado, when they first started, they really didn't have a lot of problems. And if you look at Massachusetts, they're not doing too bad right now either. But after it went on for a while, they have an increase in everything in Colorado. 135% in deaths in automobiles related to marijuana. The people tested positive for marijuana in their system. They have 12-year-old children. The increase went up on use from 12-year-old and up by 35% or 30%. 1% is unacceptable. 30% is obscene. For a 12-year-old smoking marijuana, that's crazy, all right? You talk about money, they talk about $10 million net. The town, $300,000. Okay. So, you think a life might be worth $300,000? I think it's worth a lot more than that, just because if one person overdoes it, it's the same as a bar. One person overdrinks, kills someone, the life, you can't replace that. It just can't happen. So, now you go through all that, and now we go back to their money. So, federally, it's still illegal to sell marijuana or profit from the sale of marijuana. So, where do they put their money? Can't go to a bank, okay? So, now how do they pay their payroll taxes? How do we know how much money they really make? It's all cash business. They can't even use a credit card, credit card, none of that can be used. It all has to still be figured out. So, that still hasn't been figured out, even in Colorado. So, they still have problems with money and this and that. I know someone in California has to buy property to hide his money somewhere so it's not in his house, so he gets robbed. His family gets killed over the money. He has to buy property to put people at safety. Because his family, if they had a million dollars in the bank or a million dollars in the basement, bank, you're not going to get robbed, basement, they're going to get robbed. So, until the federal government really comes up with a plan for this, for all the states that are getting into this, I don't think anybody should get into this. You have to put people's well-being everywhere involved. Like, if you're just paying someone $50,000 a year and they can't put the money in the bank, they're at risk. Just a normal kid, 20 years old, 25 years old, working, having a job, but he can't go put his money in the bank because he tells the bank he sells marijuana, works in the dispensary, he can't put the money in the bank because it's ill-gotten gains. You can't do it. You can't use it. There's way too many bad things attached to this right now. So, the best thing you could do for this town, and for your voters, and the people who live here, and they're going to live here for a long time, is opt out of this thing right now. Maybe put a five-year limit on it and revisit it. You know, I still think you should put it into the zoning laws too so that nobody could put it in anywhere until they straighten all the mess out. I think you're going to need another 10 years before it straightens out, to be honest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D.
Thank you, Brian.
Next is Sergio Esposito.
Good evening.
Hello, Sergio.
How's everybody doing? Tom, I want to talk about the $10,000.
You're going to bring that up again?
Last week, I was actually flattered to be quoted at the public hearing that my message of Yorktown being hashtag "open for business, baby" has resonated so greatly that it's appeared at Town Hall now. So, I'm pretty proud of myself on that one. What'd you guys think of the impersonation? Never mind, don't answer that. So, but there are too many questions regarding what's going on with this law. And I want to go over a couple of them. First and foremost, we can always possibly revisit the situation, right? Secondly, we don't know how much we're actually going to be making. You disagree with that? You have other data? That's exactly my... That's exactly my point. My point is that we could find something on Google, or somewhere else, or some study, or some scientist, or some doctor, that's going to say it is, or it isn't, it may be, it may not be. There's just too many unanswered questions. And it's not really regulated yet, and this is my biggest pet peeve. Now, I'm for business in Yorktown, everybody knows that, okay?
I'm not sure.
But, so, I mean, let's take development. When a developer comes to the Chamber of Commerce and asks for our support, we ask questions. We request, you know, a display, we want some kind of PowerPoint. I always ask, how many union jobs is it going to provide if it's a big development or something like that? There are so many questions that I go down the line to see if we're actually going to support it or not. The questions haven't been answered yet. In Maine, okay, they have it regulated. You're allowed to grow, I believe, three or five plants at every adult at your house, okay? How many?
Three.
Three. I think they upped it, but let's say three, okay? So you have three adults in your house, you could grow nine plants.
In New York, it's three mature and three immature, up to a total of six of each, so it's only two adults that can classify for it.
Well, let me explain, let me explain how people circumvent the regulations in Maine. And that's what, I still don't know what the regulations are in New York.
Okay.
So I'm taking an example where there are regulations. In Maine, you cannot sell pot to somebody else. It's illegal to do that. But what I could do is deliver an ounce of marijuana to your house and ask for a tip, okay? All right? Yeah, oh yeah. Or, or I could request a driver's fee, okay? So that's how things get, you get around it. And that's why it's important to understand what the regulations are. And we do not understand what the regulations are, because there are no regulations at this point. And that's very important. And I know everybody says that it's a myth, but the marijuana today is a lot more potent. Now, medical marijuana, I'm all for that, absolutely, at this time. I mean, if it has medicinal purposes and it helps people, especially people that have cancer and stuff, I'm all for that. But years ago, in the '60s, the stuff that, I think I read it on the thing, the stuff that the hippies used to smoke is what the quote was, it had 1% THC. Today marijuana has, can have potentially, there were different levels, there were different degrees, could have up to 30%, okay? It is not a regular, you know, like, a fun drug at 30%. Okay, that's a hardcore hallucinogenic, and it just is. You might disagree, you don't disagree, you agree, great, you just made my point, that we don't know enough about it. So, and like I said, there's a big difference between the medical stuff and, you know, using it for medicinal purposes. About the tax revenue, we're going with the $3 million number. We're making $90,000 a year for the town. How much does it cost to get an extra dare police officer on the police force? What do you think that costs us?
At least that.
At least that. Okay, so where are we, at zero then? Did we just level that number? Why? Because we do not have enough information, all right? And again, you disagree? That just proves my point even more. How long does it take marijuana to leave the system? If you're an infrequent user, and this is again, something I read, maybe it's true, maybe it's not true, I bet you you could find something that says that it's not true, I bet you you could find something that says it's more, I don't know. Again, proving my point. Infrequent users, less than two times a week, you could test positive for one to three days, okay? Are you still high one to three days later? I would say no, that's my opinion. Do I know that for a fact? No. Can we find something that says maybe you are, or maybe you're not? Probably. Great, you just proved my point. If you're a frequent user, it's seven to 21 days. What about edibles? I mean, I haven't heard anybody talk about edibles. They're delicious, yeah, I'm assuming they are. Edibles are even more potent. And how high are you, how long does your high last if you have an edible at a recreational facility where you could consume on premises? Three to four hours. So you're going to have one edible and you're going to sit there for three to four hours and do what? I don't know. So, I mean, there are a lot of questions on how you would mitigate somebody driving around in a state when they shouldn't be driving, just too many questions for me. And although I really appreciate, you know, a business coming into town with the amount of revenue that we're assuming would be generated, that would be great, although I disagreed with the number of the amount of cars that would come through. I mean, if we're looking at, realistically, they said $10 million, and we said, I think the number was 5,000 cars, each sale that came through would be a $2,000 sale, that's a lot of pot. I mean, I don't know how many people are actually going to come in and spend $2,000 every visit, so I think the traffic will be a little higher, we could mitigate that. That's not a problem, there's traffic studies, there's things that we could do, and I think the town could handle something like that. I just don't have the answers to a lot of questions. And I'm asking you guys to opt out. Thank you.
Thank you, Serge.
Thank you, Serge.
Thank you, Mr. Esposito.
Next is Mike Calaballo.
Hi, everybody. Hi, Mike. So I really don't even know what the debate is anymore, I don't think you really have a choice. I think the decision's been made already. If every town around here has opted out, you have no choice. Are we to assume that they haven't done the math and figured out the benefits, the cost analysis? They opted out. Are we to assume that we're the enlightened ones? Now, we've heard a lot of comparisons to alcohol, so let's use that comparison. Imagine if every town around here banned alcohol and closed all their bars, and the only town that had bars and alcohol was Yorktown. There'd be a stampede here. So if we opt in and everybody's opt out, we are now the pot capital of northern Westchester. And that's, there's no argument, you have no choice, they've made the decision, they're smart people, right? So what's the debate? You can always opt in, you know, is that where we want to be? From another point of view, as a homeowner, I haven't heard one benefit I get from this. I agree that, you know, the amount's higher than 10,000, but it's still trivial, it's not going to lower my taxes, I'm not seeing any benefit for me, so, and you just said I could grow it, so what's the point here? The debate's over. Everybody else has opted out, and you have no choice. That's my point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is everyone on my list, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Whoa, we got...
If you haven't spoken yet, let's go there first, if that's okay, Jeff?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Billy Scala.
Thank you.
I'll just say what I said the last time, and just for a small point, if you don't think it's a gateway drug, go to any rehab center, anyone, and say to the guys, what started, how did you start? Well, they're not going to say I was smoking Pepsi-Cola, they started smoking marijuana. And what happens is, you build up the tolerance to it, you don't get high as high as you want, and then some weak problem in your mind makes you go to something bigger. So what happens is, a gateway drug. And my heart goes out to that poor fellow that lost his daughter and everybody else. And if it was me, I would have found that supplier and killed him in front of his mother. It's awful. Thank you.
Thanks, Willie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scala.
Anybody else? Oh. Seraphina.
My name is Seraphina, I live on Brookside Avenue. I think we're forgetting one thing here. We don't know anything about the stores, that's what they are, opening up here. Number two, we have no enforcement, we have no, we don't know anything about the profit, what it gives to us. And also, the most important thing, our schools teach our kids to say no to drugs. And here, we are possibly going to say yes to drugs? It doesn't make sense to me. And the other thing is two, and I came here in 1993, in 1997, I and two other friends opened up a chapter on 202 and the First Presbyterian Church. It was called Families Anonymous. And it was like AA and Al-Anon, and you don't, you will never understand unless you were in that room. There were people, adults and children of all ages hooked on marijuana. So it may not be the gateway drug, people don't understand, but it is a drug that many other problems come, mental health, family breakup, divorces, death, sickness, and I think we have to remember this, what else will it bring? So please think about to opt out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Anybody else? Jeff, did you want to come back for another round?
Yes, sir, so much fun.
You're doing really good at public speaking.
Yeah.
It's like your new patch?
I love talking in public, of course, I was totally planning on coming back up here. So just so everyone understands, the medical marijuana industry is a cash business in the state of New York, because as was stipulated, you can't pay with a check or a credit card because it is illegal for federal purposes. However, you do not pay your employees in cash, that is false circular 280E of the Internal Revenue Code stipulates that you cannot deduct below-the-line items with relating to marijuana sales, which means no advertising expenses, no utility, things like that. However, you are permitted to deduct above-the-line items with respect to your cost of goods sold. You do pay taxes, you do file payroll tax returns, you do give W2s and W3s, 1099s, 1096s, all the things that businesses are required to file with the Internal Revenue Code are filed. Anyone who knows anything knows that you always pay Uncle Sam when you make money. I came up here just to stipulate the tax code because an individual came up and was making false statements about the Internal Revenue Code. I know it quite well, I dream about it. Anyway, as a side note, Councilman, stevia is the drug you were referring to about 20, 30 minutes ago about...
I don't think it was stevia.
You don't think so?
Stevia's a sugar substitute. I'm talking about something that they used to...
No, no, I assure you, steva, yeah, yeah.
Steva?
Yeah, I assure you it is. Anyway, thank you so much.
Mr. D?
The drug you were talking about is K2 and spice.
K2, thank you, that's what it was.
Somebody pays attention what goes on in the world, not everybody does. So, okay, so you came back at me for the federal tax code. I didn't say tax code, never came up. What I said was, how are you going to pay your employees? Because you can't put your money in the bank to show the payroll, because the federal government finds marijuana sales illegal. So you can't say, I sell marijuana, and I'm going to put this money in the bank so I can pay my employees. It doesn't work like that. You can't put the money in the bank, you have to find a way around it. The way around it that I've been, understand what I've been looking at, is ZEL and systems like that. And that's how they're going to get around it to pay the payroll tax. But they still, any cash business, and everybody knows this isn't business, does not tell you what they really make. It doesn't happen, you can't, because some's going to go over here, some's going to go over there, you just can't keep track of it, it's impossible, okay? It's just, there's so many flaws in the way this was written in New York State and other states, not just, not just New York. It has to be fixed first. You're just not going, you're not going to get paid what you deserve here, you're not going to be able to fix anything with this little bit of money you're going to get, it's not going to do anything, and all you're going to do is create nothing but drama throughout the town. You already got it here, look here tonight, you got people coming over here saying, and this one's wrong, and that one's wrong. We're all wrong, we're all right. We don't know, because there's no rules.
That's right.
They didn't write nothing down yet, so we don't know who's right and who's wrong. So just opt out of this, put a five-year hold on it, once it becomes legal, because they haven't even started with dispensaries being legal yet, that doesn't start, I believe, until '22, because they have to set all this up, 23, is that what it is? Five years after they're legal? Let's see what's going on then. Let's see how who opts in, which are going to be very few, are doing in their little towns. Then maybe it would be something for Yorktown. But I don't, I don't see that coming in the future. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Brian.
Anybody else? Yep.
Just one clarification, yep, here we go again. Yeah, it's going to be heavily cash business, but the, as far as those, a lot of those claims that were made, there's these things called state-chartered banks, maybe you've heard of them? And that's the banking system that these dispensaries are using. State-chartered banks and also state credit unions.
Okay. Thank you for clarification. Anyone else for, for, anyone else for the public hearing? Any other comments? Chapter 301, opt out? Any other comments?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the board?
So, you know, I'd like to just, you know, hit on a couple of things that were said and, you know, implied and all. So, you know, I had, I had that part about no regulations, and someone spoke about, you know, do you go after the bar, do you go after the vodka company? And actually, you do, there's something in New York State called third-person liability with alcohol service. So you have to be trained to dispense alcohol, and if you over-serve someone, you and the restaurant, you as a bartender and the restaurant are open for lawsuits. There was a comment about, you know, hey, it's easy to say, don't smoke and drive. And we've been saying, don't drink and drive for how many years, and it's still been a problem. So, you know, that argument sort of is reversed, it doesn't make sense. You know, the problem is accessibility and having it there, having a place where you could smoke, and once again, it goes back, and I think the main thing that was said that really impacted me today, and it was Trissey's, you know, talking about the fact that there are zero regulations. And, you know, how do you, how do you guide, how do you have a roadmap for success? But, you know, look at the problems that we have with the illegal, now make it legal, still no regulations there, what's going to happen? And there was also, you know, part of the law, they've already, they've dropped the, here, let me take the law back, Tommy, I'm sorry. They basically no longer have it as against the law to sell marijuana. It's been decriminalized. So the argument about the regulation, the state already has, pardon me, screwed that up, because now you've made it legal to sell it. So that's, that's so contradictory to what the goal when someone says, oh, but if we regulate it, it'll be better controlled. But now, now it's not, because once again, you regulate it, you tax it. So now it's going to be cheaper to buy it on the street than it is from the dispensary. And I didn't realize when I said that the other day, and that's, you know, this is a gateway, it's the gateway of the illicit sales and the gateway of legalizing other things, that it's already happening in Oregon, so it's not like it's a figment of our imagination. But you've now pushed a gateway into selling it illegally, because I could get it cheaper. And you know what? I don't think everyone in the world stands up, especially when you're, when you're looking for drugs and spending your money on drugs, and it's like, wow, how can I save money? Well, I'm not going to buy it illegally because then the government won't get their share. I don't think many people say that. And, you know, and I think someone also made the point of, you know, what is it saying to our children? And, you know, this says, wait, I thought this was bad. You preached to me in school it was bad, but you could go out and buy it? What's the messaging? What's, what are we, you know, what are we doing to that awareness? It's such a contradiction. And once again, back to the point that Trissey made, without that roadmap, I don't know how we can move forward, without saying, what do we do? What are the laws? Because look at all these questions. And for every question, for every comment, there was a counter-comment, and that just shows you that there's just so much unknown here. Those are my...
Yeah. You know, I think every, everybody knows their own industry, or thinks they know their own industry. Councilman Diana is going to reiterate what he said last week. He said, and use $10,000, I want you to all have that etched in your mind, okay? It was simple math, okay? Just as a, as a quote, $10,000. I don't know how much they're going to make. One of the gentlemen in the back would probably tell me how much, I don't know, an ounce of marijuana goes for now if it's in a dispensary. I don't know. Once again, I don't know. You know, I want to thank everybody for their testimony. You know, I want to thank everybody for their testimony. And, and, and the, the banter back and forth was actually good. Because I think it educated both sides. Dr. Kaladny is a noted authority. I don't listen to CNN, number one. Okay? Number two, he absolutely stated during testimony at a Senate hearing and at one of my Against Heroin, that it is a gateway drug. It may not be, as one of the gentlemen came up here, said, "A gateway drug to all." But it can be considered a gateway drug. We talked about drinking and driving. No, we're not supposed to do that. And that's been preached through mad and sad. And here I go again.
The acronyms.
The, all my acronyms. But... I talked about the fatally, the fatal accident over in Rockland County. That was a very tragic thing. Couple white claws. And admittedly, I didn't know what they were. I had one. They're not bad.
No, I told you.
Okay? But the two white claws that the guy had may not have caused him to have that fatal accident. Maybe the marijuana that he smoked did, or vice versa. Guess what, folks? I don't know. Taxes? What did we say, Sergio? $3 million? $90,000 is what the town would get?
$90,000.
$90,000. Maybe that's more realistic than my $10,000.
Yeah, you're $200.
Huh?
You're $200.
No, no, I was $10,000 and we were getting $200 worth of taxes. Now get, get my quotes right, all right?
Did your bad math right?
Yeah, get my bad math right, would you? So, anyway, $90,000, that's a police officer's salary.
No.
Not including his benefits.
Approximately. Not including benefits, okay? Plus the car that we're going to have to buy, plus the...
Equipment.
Equipment, the training, the uniforms, et cetera, et cetera. We're in a minus. That's for $3 million, folks. Kids' use? I'm going to go back to my time. If you wanted to buy a six-pack of beer to go drink under the bleachers at the high school, who did you get it from when you were in high school? The drinking age was 18? Well, there were 18-year-olds while you were in high school. You gave them the however much it was to go get your black label beer because it was about $2 a six-pack. They went and got it, came out of the A&amp;P, gave it to you, and you went under the bleachers and drank it with your buddies. I didn't do that. So there's where you're going to get your kids' use. In closing, folks, in one of my closings here, it is not a well-thought-out law. Throughout this whole law here that I took off of the internet, you know, they're going to develop, after completing a research, drivers will remain prohibited and will carry some penalties as it does currently if you use cannabis and drive. It's a very tough drug to test for. That's the problem. And, you know, I was reading this one section in here. Criminal justice and record expungement. Cannabis, cannabis penalty framework will be restructured to avoid the criminalization seen in prohibition. Reduced penalties will be implemented for possession and sale. What does that do? It encourages black market sales, in my opinion. What do I know? Public health and education campaign. They're going to start this. Hasn't been implemented. They're going to do a research study with the DOH. Hasn't been implemented. We cannot allow this dispensary law to pass. I cannot in good conscience vote yes for this. And one of the gentlemen, or one, or I forget who said it, said, "Money is part of life." And yes, it is. I agree. But what's a life worth? Okay? Whether it's those two white claws that caused that fatal accident or two marijuana cigarettes? I don't know. That's all I got.
Councilman Patel? Any comments?
Let me read you something, okay? I, I forgot to, to read it, but the THC is... It's called tetrahydrocannabinol.
Oh, I forgot to bring this up.
Similar to Himalayan in hops, okay? So I like the grasshopper to hops and not go this in my body. I can tell you that. So when I was a speak, I give a speech to the day of graduation. I guarantee none of you can repeat the words I have said there, okay? And some politics came, I mean, they told me, you know, they tried not to give me... Let me tell you, every day I go, somebody reminds me. Our children's are the biggest accomplishment of our life's works. And every day, we make a deposit in a memory bank of our children's. Because of there, we are here, you know? You know, you don't want any child to die, really, or get into the habit. Our parents raises, you know, yes, you know, you see on the television and all these things like that, but... I studied chemistry when I was in the eighth grade and I, at the same time, I studied the alphabet, okay? My English was no good, but I tell you, my math is none better than anybody sitting in this room, okay? One crystal, I grew a mustache, okay? It's in space and I was able to pay back my mortgage in the first year, okay? Right? And my children graduated from West Point Military Academy and also graduated from war. And they serve in Iraq and Afghanistan to keep the freedom alive, okay? And at the West, and, and then we all talk about the, the, you know, the veterans and all that. Nearly 5,000 students of the, the West Point parents. I have taught the science and I also speak, spoke the same words. John F. Kennedy said they were the most valuable resources. Maybe they will become a scientist or political leader. Maybe some of them will become the president. No matter what color you are or what you are, I think we should really think it that maybe you should wait, you know, really. It's too early. And if, you know, if you need it, you know, it's available. Just get it to the doctor's prescription or a drugstore or something, you know? Maybe email, you know, and they will not even ask you prescription. I don't know whether you need a prescription to get it in. But I think, you know, look at that young children I spoke and... She know the value who I'm talking about, really. You have dedicated your life, really, you know, your town and many of these people, you know? And how many years, really? I was not even sitting over here and I used to speak in school, you know? And I'm very proud that, that our community is caring for all the children, really. And maybe some of them will become a president. You don't know when they graduate. And I know many, many good students, really. They make lot, lot more money than a superintendent of both schools combined. And I happen to know those kind of kids, you know? And they did not use this cannabines and they study hard, really. And I'm very proud of this community. And I think I'm going to wait. Not so hurry, you know? There is no hurry in a hurry. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Roker, any thoughts?
Yeah, I have some thoughts. And, but first, I want to talk to the people in the audience who came tonight. And I wanted to thank each and every one of you for coming and letting us know how you feel. I think it's always important for us to know who you are. But I think it's also important for you to know who I am. And you'll understand where my point of view is. I'm a black woman that was raised in the church. And I still teach Bible, Bible study. I would be a hypocrite to say that I believe this is the right thing to do. Last year, I spent, I don't, I don't know how long I spent on the phone with our county legislator to get Trissey's organization money. What they do is puck and, and help kids understand how to avoid using drugs. And one of the things that I remember saying to Vedat was, prior to your coming to the organization starting as town clerk, I received a lot of death certificates from young people. It, just from when Trissey's organization began, the number of deaths dropped. And I'm not, I'm not fooling. Obviously, I can't show you since death records are vital and confidential records. I would be going against everything that I've told my two kids. When people tell me that, well, it's kind of like alcohol, I get very angry. Because if it was up to me, I'd close down bars. Because someone very close to me, when I was growing up, became an alcoholic after a divorce. And this is somebody that I loved and was such a good person, but didn't know how to handle alcohol. So for me, if I could shut down every bar, I would. And so that's not a good argument to make for me. My feeling is that once we have a real law with real regulations, the next town board or subsequent town board can consider doing what it would like to do. But as I sit here, I'm not a hypocrite. I can't say yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roker. Councilwoman Diana, you had a few more comments you wanted to make?
Yeah, I got so hung up on the $10,000 that I forgot a couple of things. A, a book was given to me by a gentleman sitting to my right. And it was called The Smoke Screen. And it's written by Kevin A. Sabat, Ph.D. The, there was a definite increase in Colorado in traffic fatalities where the drivers were tested positive for marijuana. Okay? It goes up exponentially. Marijuana hospitalization increased since legalization in Colorado 101% and in Alaska 45%. Increased cannabis use with, I'm sorry, 25% increase in cannabis use disorder, CUD, among 12, 12 to 17-year-olds in legal states. 25%, folks. The, from 2008 to 2017, the marijuana plant potency went up 17.1%. The concentrate potency from 2008 to 17 went up 55.7%. And this is one that I found kind of interesting. For our greenies out there. The indoor cultivation of 1 kilogram of marijuana requires 2, 5.2 megawatt-hours of electricity and releases 4.5 metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions. So that's for indoor cultivation. And I believe that's how most of it is done now. So there was just some statistics that I, I found interesting on some of the quotes that were made and so on and so forth. You know, at one point last week, I believe it was, there was a, a statement made that, you know, a car was stopped and it had five bags of marijuana in it. Well, do you know why that car was stopped? And do you know what was able to detect the marijuana in that car? And why our marijuana is, I shouldn't say our marijuana, but our trafficking, and this according to our judges, of most drugs into this town is down, is because of our police and because of our canines. One of which Yorktown for Heroin bought. The other was bought by Senator Murphy and his staff. So... Alice, I'm going to quote you here. "We need a real law, folks." We don't need something that's thrown together to appease people. We need something that everyone can sink their teeth into. Where if businesses want to open up, they can do it properly and profit, profit, properly. Where we're going to have more field screening device testing for this particular type of intoxicant. Now, I'm going to call it an intoxicant. It's, it's like a beer or like a white claw. Now that I know what that is. And, so... The last thing I want to do is impede a business from being started. But if a business is going to be started, I want it to be the right business for this town with the right laws that back it. I'm a small business owner. I have to follow, I have probably a stack of laws that is that thick that I have to follow. So the long and short of it, folks, is if we're going to do it, let's have a real law. Let's do it right. And I employ that this board votes to opt out at this present time. And let's revisit it. We can revisit it. And if the gentleman wants to open his business elsewhere, I'm sorry, I wish you could have it in Yorktown at this point. But, and maybe you can, but I'll lay my head on the pillow at night and know that we did the right thing. You folks elected me to do the right job, and that's what I'm going to try and do.
Thank you, Councilman Diana. I, I want to also thank everyone for coming out tonight, last week. I really appreciate the comments from both sides. I really appreciate the level of maturity and respect that we also showed each other.
It was fun.
It was, it actually was fun.
It was fun.
It was fun.
Especially my $10,000.
Especially that and your whole white claw monologue from last week. But in, in all seriousness, that's, that's what this country is about. That's what this community is about. And we're able to exchange ideas and thoughts and do it in a respectful manner. And you see what's going on in places like Cuba right now. And I'm just thankful that we can do this here in the way that we did it. So thank you to all the residents who've come and voiced their opinions. I raised a couple of concerns last week, and they still remain. And I, Matt, Jeff, I, I hear you. I do. I really do. But when the regulatory commission that's going to hand down how dispensaries and cafes are going to operate hasn't even met yet, I just don't, to Councilman Diana's point, think that it's right or responsible for us to approve something without knowing the rules of engagement first.
Have they been chosen?
No. I think some of them have. I think some of them have.
It's three government appointees, a governor appointees and one from the Assembly, one from the Senate.
I think...
So do I get to point my friends? Is that it?
Well... Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty much, Alice.
But that's part of the problem. After all, the regulatory stuff is paid for. That's where the kiddies divide it up. And it specifies after. So...
My, again, my point being though is you still don't have the commission set up yet. And I, and I just think the responsibility, it would be irresponsible for us to move this forward as in to, to allow our business when we don't know what the rules of engagement are. I said it last week. I still, I still say it today. I just feel like with this law, Albany shot and they named. And they do it a lot. Like, I can tell you stories until you're blue in the face because I've been there for a number of years on the staff level and I saw it firsthand. We still have questions on enforcement. We still have questions on technology for breathalyzers, which, again, it's just not here yet. And that's the key word, "yet." You said it last week, Councilman Lacterman. You said the genie's out of the bottle. And it is. It's out of the bottle. We're not debating legalization of marijuana. The debate has been had and that law has been passed. If you're over 21, you are able to enjoy recreational marijuana as long as it's in a place that it's not prohibited to smoke. Like our parks. As a reminder, you cannot smoke in our parks. Right, Jeff? Gotcha. But we still have technology issues. Like I said earlier last week, there's still beta testing. Uh, a lot of the breathalyzer technologies, they will be here at some point. And when they are here, we will invest in them, we will make sure that our police have them. It's not here yet. I acknowledged last week, and I want to acknowledge it again, that yes, there has been a generational shift in the perception of marijuana. It, it just is. It just is. I really want to thank Jeff Veach for coming down. Mr. Veach has been a leader in this community for a very long time, I don't believe he's still here anymore. One of the things, and, and I've had several conversations with Mr. Veach in the past as well, but one of the things that struck me when I've spoken to him, I'm not here to weigh in on the debate of Gateway or not. I'm not, I'm not doing it. Because fact of the matter is, we just don't know how some people will react. We don't know.
I think it's similar to medication.
I think it's similar to COVID.
Yeah, you know, we don't know.
You don't, well, Councilwoman Patel, we've been telling people to wear masks because they do what? Protect?
You know why I'm putting the mask on? Because I cut the grass, and I don't want more pollen, and I'm still not convinced
At the direction I thought we were going in.
That the COVID
Not the direction we were gonna go in.
What a shock.
Oh, we were laughing, Vishnu, what did you say?
He did get there.
What was that last part?
I, I still, the COVID is still not, is gone. Another version, this is why the book, let me tell you, not, not too many graduate students can understand that one, alright?
Let me just, let me just finish for a second.
And I'm gonna wear it all the time.
But, but my, where I hoped we were going, where I think we landed, was we told people to wear masks to protect other people, because we didn't know. We didn't know some people could contract COVID, and they wouldn't even know it. Some people contracted COVID in this community and they died. You just didn't know. And thinking about the sacrifices that we've made for the last 18 months because we didn't know. Five of us up here, all could be reacting differently to COVID, we can all react differently.
I still have a fear.
Of COVID?
Yeah.
Oh, I believe it, yeah.
Not everybody is
No.
Been vaccinated.
No. But my, my point being is, we've taken, we've made a lot of sacrifices because we just didn't know how people were gonna react. And I, and talking to Mr. Veach and going through and hearing his story and, and, and learning the, all about Justin, his son, I think it's very similar. And, and so we just don't know. We just don't know how people, and especially young people, are going to respond when they, when they try it. I think that we need to make sure, to, going back to Councilman Diana's point, the genie's out of the bottle, we need to make sure that the services are here in the town for our kids. It's, I see, and I know people are, may not agree, I don't think it's a matter of if, but when. Because again, the debate's been had. The regulations are gonna come down, the technology's gonna be here, it may not be tomorrow, it may be in five years, it may be in 10 years, it may be in three years, who knows? But I think really what the board needs to be looking at is how do we make sure that the services for the kids are here to continue what we've taught them? Partnering with Alliance for Safe Kids, partnering with Drug Crisis in Our Backyard, partnering with the Veach Foundation. So we need to make sure that the, that, from a, from a community standpoint, when the time comes where there may or may not be a dispensary in Yorktown, but if there is one, that we have the services in place that our kids can rely on, and that can continue to educate them as they have done and as our schools have done for years. I am not in favor of, of, I believe you need to opt out for those reasons. I don't think that we're ready. I don't think the state's ready. Uh, and as we've heard time and again, there are just way too many question marks left surrounding a lot of the important questions that we've heard and, and we've been asking ourselves. I understand, Matt, you said I'll see you in 40, 60 days, 45 days, 45 days, that's your right? No problem.
Yeah.
No problem. That's, that's the process. Uh, and I respect it. And I respect your efforts, and I respect your perspective. But from, from the town, but from my standpoint, I agree with, excuse me, excuse me. From my perspective, I agree with the town board that we should opt out.
You know, I, I know that supposedly you have to be 21 to go into these places and make a purchase. But I also know that the brain continues to develop in young people until they're about 26. And I remember when I was outside of 7-Eleven, when that young kid approached me and said, I need you to do a favor for me. And I said, what do you want? And he said, I want you to go in there and buy me a pack of cigarettes. And he had to be all of 13.
He asked the wrong lady.
I said, well, I told him that. I told him that, I said, you know what, you picked the wrong person, you picked the wrong person to ask. You better get on your little bike and just, just pedal away. So there's no way that some young person is going to say no to a kid. They're gonna say, hold on.
Yeah, I did that when I was your age, sure, that's, that's what they'll say.
I didn't do that.
But that, but that's, that's what you hear when people agree to do that. But at, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to opt out of 301.
Adam? I just want to make sure procedurally it be, yeah, there's, um, I have the resolution.
We have to close the public hearing.
Yeah, we have to close the public hearing.
Do you have to do a voice vote?
Yes, it has to be a roll call vote.
We'll do a roll call vote, let's, I'm sorry, do you
You have to pass the secret part of that first.
Did we close?
I said it, did we close?
No, we didn't close public hearing yet.
Did we close public hearing?
Um, yes.
Yeah.
Did we? Okay.
Alright, um, let's see. So Adam, this is the, is this, I'm just going through it quick, is this the Secra?
Just, you just read the, the whole resolution.
Okay. Whereas the town board of the town of Yorktown is undertaken to adopt a new local law to amend the town code by adding a new chapter 301 to opt out of allowing cannabis retail dispensaries and onsite consumption sites as authorized under cannabis law Article IV. Whereas this local law is adopted pursuant to cannabis law Chapter 131, which expressly authorizes the town board to adopt the local law requesting the cannabis control board to prohibit the establishment of cannabis retail dispensary licenses and/or onsite consumption licenses within the jurisdiction of the town of Yorktown, and is subject to a permissive referendum, the procedure of which is governed by municipal home rule law, Chapter 24. And whereas the town board is considered the provisions of Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law and the regulations adopted thereunder, and finds this local law to be a type 2 action as defined therein, requiring no further review. Whereas the town board convened a public hearing with respect to the proposed local law on July 6, 2021, which, which was adjourned, and reconvened on July 13, 2021, which public hearing was closed. Now therefore be it resolved that the proposed local law is hereby adopted.
Second.
A motion in a second?
Aye.
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 Aye?
That's not a roll call part.
That's not a roll call vote, I didn't know.
The adoption of the local law will be.
Okay, so now we will make a motion to adopt the local law.
No.
Second.
Aye.
Councilwoman Alice Roker?
Aye.
Councilman Vishnu Patel?
Yes.
Supervisor Matthew Slater?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas Diana?
Aye.
Councilman Ed Lactowen?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Evacuation.
Vote.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you to everyone for your respect. I appreciate it and your demeanor. We do have some resolutions that we'll conclude with, we're gonna authorize the comptroller to pay out the cash value of unused time to Vincent Haight as of the date of his retirement. We're gonna authorize the comptroller to pay out the cash value of unused time to Dawn Irving as of date of her retirement. We're gonna authorize, if, if everyone could just please
just go out the door, guys, we'd appreciate it.
If you're leaving, just please take your conversations outside. Thank you very much. We're gonna authorize the comptroller to process the following budget transfer for the Amazon Park District for the replacement of a septic tank.
This Friday's giving
Just gonna give them a few, I'm gonna give them a few seconds here. If everyone could, again, just please quietly exit if you're planning on leaving. This is the best part of the meeting, just for the record, it's all the important stuff.
Everybody's leaving for the best part of the meeting.
The end?
Yeah, exactly.
I figured I'd try to get someone to say. Okay, authorize the comptroller to process the following budget transfer for the Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, this is for the replacement of the three chlorine tanks at the Brian J. Slavin Pool Facility, and it's to be performed by the Marine Pool Renovation LLC, this is a cost of $16,050. As a reminder to the board and to the public, this is in response to the chlorine leak that occurred at that facility. Thank you, Moore. Uh, we have a resolution to approve the release of a bond for work done at 3247 Old Yorktown Road to Franz Oso Contracting, Inc., in the amount of $500. Approve release of a bond for work done at 587 Madison Court to Westchester Modular in the amount of $1,000. Approve bond release for work done at 2040 Greenwood Street to Enviro, Enviro Green Associates, Inc., and approve release of bond for work done at 1401 Front Street, to 1401 Front Street, Front Street Associates, LLC. And, yeah, that was a weird one. Uh, in the amount of $5,400. Also to accept a bond for work to be done at 2040 Greenwood Street received from Enviro Green Associates, Inc., in the amount of $15,000. And we will also accept the monthly reports of the receiver of taxes and town clerk.
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I like to get the, the report on electronic version, so, you know, this way, I don't know how much yards collected and like that, okay? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Councilman, with that, if there's no other business before the board, we'll make a motion to adjourn.
No. Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Get home safe.
Remember to lock your cars.
Lock your cars. 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year.